Carrie, can you?
So I read at seven o'clock, part of the open of the, excuse me, the opening statement. I'm going to reread it now, sort of adjusted for our later start time, and include the section that speaks to public comment. Good evening and welcome. This is a regular meeting of the Princeton Planning Board on June 2, 2022. Tonight's public meeting is starting later than usual because the Planning Board needed to discuss matters related to personnel in a closed session. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by filing a copy with the Clerk of Princeton on the 27th day of May, 2022. Notice of this meeting has been posted to the municipal website, princetonnj.gov/calender. Pursuant to Executive Order 107, due to the state of emergency in New Jersey regarding COVID-19, notice that during the declared state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Planning Board will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet and The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on April 8, 2020, and again on January 6, 2021. Please note, this meeting is being recorded. During hearings on applications for development, members of the public will have an opportunity to comment and ask questions. Public comment is heard by the board after an applicant's representatives have finished their presentations and have been questioned by Planning Board members and staff. The Planning Board also invites public comment on proposed ordinances referred to this board by Princeton's mayor and council for our assessment of the ordinance's consistency with the Princeton Community Master Plan. However, please be aware that the formal public hearing for all ordinances takes place before the mayor and council at a council meeting, not before the planning board. Those wishing to comment should virtually raise your hand by clicking the hand icon at the bottom of your screen, or if participating by phone, by pressing star nine. Oral comments will be taken in the order in which hands were raised. We ask with respect that members of the public express your views in three minutes or less. Inappropriate public comment containing obscenity, hate speech, or relating to matters not before the board will be muted. And Carrie, you do not need to call the roll because we did that already. We did that when we opened up at seven. So.
I disagree. I think we should do it again because this portion is being recorded.
Okay, well, that very start of the other was too, but I totally get what you mean, and it makes it simpler, so please call the roll. Thank you.
Ms. Capizoli?
Here.
Mr. Chow?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. McGowan?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mr. Quinn?
Here.
Ms. Sacks?
Here.
Mr. Texarney? Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Bodikheimer?
Here.
Mrs. Wilson?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you.
So announcements, I know we have at least two. Tim Quinn, you want to go first with the, oh, I see your hand is raised anyway, so.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to report that the Ad Hoc Committee on Site Plan Review held its public meeting last Thursday, and it was, I think, a very engaging and productive dialogue and listening session. We were joined by half a dozen to eight or nine architects and one attorney who offered their perspectives on the, on what they saw as the way forward. So knowing that not everyone is available at the time of a specific meeting, the Ad Hoc Committee is going to leave open for two weeks a public comment session by which anyone can write, can submit written comments that will be sent to Justin J. Lesko at princetonnj.gov, and will be forwarded to members of the Ad Hoc Committee, at which time the Ad Hoc Committee will reconvene and talk about its reports and next steps. So two weeks, anyone who's in the audience tonight, or if you know someone who wish to be heard on this, we urge them to write. Thank you.
And pardon me if you indicated this already, but write to the Planning Office?
Yes, to Justin J. Lesko at princetonnj.gov.
Thank you.
He volunteered, or it was a gray area between volunteered and voluntold, so.
Okay, great. Well, that, since you dropped Justin's name, I'll turn to you. Justin, I know you're going to give us a report on the Master Plan Steering Committee.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The Master Plan Steering Committee held its first meeting two Fridays ago, on the 20th. The next one will be late June. We haven't gotten it figured out yet. We want to make sure we get the most people possible on the Steering Committee and the Master Plan Subcommittee that can attend, but it will be late June, so we'll give you an update at the next Planning Board meeting as well. Plus, it'll be on the municipal calendar. These meetings are on Zoom, and the public is more than welcome to attend.
And the first meeting lasted two hours plus, I believe, went a little, little over two hours, but in my view, was really, really interesting and informative, and I'm very glad it happened, as Justin has heard me say six times now, I think. Okay. Any other announcements from board members or staff? Not seeing any hands up. Okay, then let's go on to the resolution of approval. This is for engaging Jerry Mueller's office in an appeal. Well, I'll let you, Jerry, explain it.
Well, this involves the Tiger Facilities. As you might recall, one of the neighbors, an objector before the board filed a lawsuit challenging the approval, the suit was against the Planning Board and the Princeton University. We prevailed at the trial level, and the judge issued a very lengthy opinion, which was very favorable, and they have now, they being the plaintiff in the case below, the objector has now filed an appeal. So this, this is all about the financing appeal. Financing I had gotten was just for trial level work.
Okay. Our tax dollars at work. Any questions for Jerry or any, or staff about this resolution? If not, would someone like to move it?
Move it.
Moved by David Cohen, seconded by Julie Capizoli. Thank you. Carrie, could you call the roll, please?
Ms. Capizoli?
Yes.
Mr. Chow?
Yeah, yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Sacks?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion, Carrie.
Thank you. Next up, we have the minutes of a special meeting that happened September 29, 2021. Any questions or?
Those were not distributed, as I did.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
The meeting minute in draft form yet, so.
Okay, I think I saw a draft. That's why I didn't, wasn't, I was confused. Sorry about that. You probably told me, Carrie, that they were.
Yes, I had not heard back from Mr. Regan yet, so they'll be on the next agenda.
Okay, great. Thank you. So next up, we have a discussion of an ordinance referral, ordinance 2022-15. It's carried from our May 19 meeting. This relates to the Hun School campus. It's a rezoning request, and I will let Justin set the table here. I'll just start by saying that this is, this ordinance is identical to an ord, the ordinance that we found to be consistent with the master plan last year, I think it was, and so part of what Justin will do is explain why we're seeing it again.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I have a PowerPoint to show for this one.
Okay.
Let me clear my screen. And can you see that now?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. So as the chair said, this is a request for zone change, and your task tonight is to review it for consistency with the master plan. This is ordinance 2215 regarding two parcels over on Wynton and Edgerstone Roads, and I'll show those next. If you look over here, this long parcel is 8211, and that's the mall of the Hun School. Block 9303, Lot 1 over here, between Wynton, Edgerstone, and Russell, is the, what's known as the Mason House. Both properties are currently zoned R2 residence district, and they're proposed to be E4 institutional residential district. And note that these are former township zones because we actually do have R2 and E4 in the borough. You'll see this big parcel right here, or a couple of parcels, is the Hun Schools campus, and that's zoned E4, while mostly everything around it is R2, as are the subject properties. Here's an aerial photo. There's that mall again, Hun School Campus, Mason House. Here is one of the subject properties, the Mason House from Edgerstone Road. Here it is from Wynton Road. And here it is from Russell Road. So as the chair alluded to, this, this case, you previously saw this request for, Matt, a request for zone change with master plan consistency review. In December 2019, the Hun School gave a presentation to the Planning Board. Then the pandemic happened. The Hun School received a temporary use variance to use the Mason House for academic support space to free up other space on campus for use by the infirmary during COVID. The Mason House was empty at that time, as the headmaster moved to another house that had been recently donated. The Planning Board's endorsement came of that presentation was reported to council last summer, so the pandemic is kind of the reason there's a big difference between these two. Following that, the first ordinance with the zone change request from R2 to E4 was introduced last September at council. The Planning Board reviewed it in October 21 and found that the ordinance was consistent with the master plan by a nine-to-zero vote. And as the chair said, that ordinance for a zone change was identical to the, to the one you'll be discussing tonight. The council then had a public hearing on that vote in October of last year, and the vote was three yeses, one no, and two abstaining, which led to some confusion over what that vote meant, and it was determined that it did not pass. The ordinance that you're reviewing tonight was introduced by council on May 9, and that leads us to tonight's consistency with the master plan review. And then the council, as the Board of Jurisdiction, will decide on the request for zone change two Mondays from now, on June 13. So moving on, here are the differences between the existing and the proposed or requested zoning. You'll see the R2 residential is the existing, E4 institutional residential is a proposed. There's no lot size requirements for the E4 residential. There are some for the R2 residential. I'll point out that the mall is about three and two-thirds acres, and the Mason House is on a lot that's just under two acres. Many of the properties in the neighborhood do not meet this minimum lot area for a residential house, and many near the Mason House are two to three times smaller than the Mason House lot, as it's a through lot over here, and you'll see some of the comparable ones. In the proposed zoning, the E4 setbacks are much larger. I'll show on the next slide why that is, and basically what these requirements would do if the council chose to approve this is push any sort of construction towards the Hun School's main campus. The footnote says that, you know, setbacks come from the zoning district boundary line, and they're reduced from 75 to 60 for faculty and staff housing and related parking, but otherwise are 75 feet. Those increase if the building was to be over 30 feet in height, so there's a ratio that gets applied if it goes over 30 feet in the E4 zone. That permitted building height is 10 feet higher than what would be permitted existing, 45 feet, but it couldn't be larger than three stories. And like I said, if it were larger than 30 feet, these setbacks would get larger or further from the neighbors, I guess is a better way of describing it. The FAR floor area ratio maximum is higher in the E4 zone, 16% to 10%, and FAR in the E4 district is for the whole campus, not just the individual parcel. And then the parking setbacks, they currently, there aren't any, but they would more or less follow the same as the building setbacks, so 75 feet, unless the building's bigger or taller, then they get larger to push them away from the neighbors. And I could come back to any slide, I only have two more. So here was the history of the E4 zone I found in the Town Topics from 1990. It was created for Princeton Day School, the Hun School, and Stewart Country Day School after a recommendation of the 1989 master plan. And you'll note in here, it says it was crafted to be fair to all three schools as well as to the neighbors. Previously, what the schools had to do was go in for a conditional use approval for anything they did in a residential, with their underlying residential zoning. And that FAR increase that I mentioned was the reason that the setbacks were put into place. So again, the schools could build more than a residential house could, but it has to be further from the neighbors. So then I'm going to expand upon the staff comments in the memo that I sent to the board last week and put online. Both properties are functionally part of the Hun School campus now. The zoning map change, if approved, would allow for more flexibility in the use of the Mason House site now that the headmaster has moved to the Johnson House. And staff finds that this proposal is in keeping with the community master plan in that it'll preserve open space, enhance the operations of an existing academic and cultural institution in Princeton, and help maintain a mix and balance of land uses. So the strategic overview and land use element of the master plan speaks to how Princeton is enriched by the prestigious private schools that we have. It also says that the functional and growth requirements of those schools must be balanced with the needs of the community, including with a smooth and orderly, appropriate transition between the institutions and their neighbors. And it specifically notes that the scale and mass of new school structures are frequently concerned with their surrounding neighborhoods. And it also says that the interaction between the community and students and staff of these institutions is desirable on and off campus for the schools, their students, and as well as for the neighbors. The E4 zone was created for these purposes, and it does keep the schools in line, you know, with these purposes and with safeguards for the neighbors, while also allowing the school to continue its function. So that's all I have on my presentation. Please let me know if you want to go back to any slides, or if you have any questions. I know we normally do public comment, and I have one public comment that was emailed in for someone that couldn't be here, which we allow for ordinance referrals, not necessarily for other things.
I just have a quick question, and pardon me if you already said this, but have both of the properties, you know, the long, narrow property, which as I understand it, is often used at reunions and graduation as sort of a promenade kind of thing, and, and that the school is proposing to put a permanent conservation easement on, or permanently preserve it as open space? Has that been used by the school, owned and used by the school for that purpose for, you know, since, for the last hundred years, or was it acquired more recently? Do you happen to know that?
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
I'm sure there's representatives from the school that are going to speak during public comment, if you want to ask them that.
Okay, all right. Well, they'll probably address it. And I basically had the same question about the, the other property where the headmaster's house, the former home of the headmaster is located, whether that's been used, you know, owned and used by the school, has been basically part of the school for 100 years, or whether it's a more recent acquisition.
Yeah, I know that building was built in, I believe, 1984, but I'm not sure if before that it was used or had a different structure on it. The fact that it's that kind of through lot with an arc on it, rather than what else is in the neighborhood, leads me to believe it was platted as part of the school, or, you know, the school was using it before everything else was platted, but again, I'm not 100% sure on that one.
Madam Chair, just wanted you to be aware, Mr. Goldman, who's representing the Hun School, is in attendance, as are two other witnesses who can, are available for testimony.
Okay. David Cohen?
You know, one of the questions I had, Justin, you talked about the setbacks pushing any development on the Mason House lot towards the rest of the school. There's a question that I had in interpreting the zoning setbacks, which basically are expressed, that footnote zero says the setbacks are to the zone boundaries with residential uses. So the question is, Wynton Road or Drive is not a residential zone boundary, right? If we, if we were to make this change. So the question is, what would the setback be from Wynton Road if it's not the 75 feet? Or would it be the 75 feet? And I, this may be more of a question for Derek, since it's an zoning interpretation.
I would say it's the 75 feet from the zone boundary because it lists both the institutional and residential under the same column.
So in that case, what would the setback be from the street line?
I would, it would be from the bound, the zone boundary. There wouldn't be a setback from the street line.
So, so the building could come right to Wynton, the right-of-way of Wynton Road?
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, that's a concern that I have in terms of the sensitivity to the neighborhood, that this is a road that's been a residential road. I think that a zero-foot setback, I mean, I read it the same way that you do, Derek, but I think that that might be something that would be part of our report to council that we suggest that that be clarified or modified so that there's a reasonable setback from the road. And I was looking at the aerial map a little bit and some of the other recent construction on the campus, and setback from Russell Road looks to be setback about 75 feet. I mean, I was eyeballing it from a, from an aerial view, so I think there's some precedent for having the setback from the road be similar, but obviously leave that to others to comment on.
Okay, great. Thanks for bringing that up. Other, other questions from board members before we open up for public comment? There are 50 attendees who are, some of whom I'm sure are eager to speak on this. So, yeah, yes again, David?
Yeah, sorry to hog the microphone, so to speak, but I did want to explain that to the board, that the one negative vote at the council meeting last year was mine, and the reason for it was that when we considered this zone change last, last year, there was really no discussion whatsoever about the provisions in the master plan that talk about the sensitivity of the boundaries between our educational institutions and our residential zones, and I felt that it was really improper to be adopting the zone change without having that conversation. So I'm not necessarily opposed to it. I think that the, the large setback provisions that are in the zoning ordinance, as well as buffering requirements, which Justin didn't really talk about, but there are also landscape buffers that are required along those zone boundaries as well, all go a long way towards providing the kind of sensitive transition that's required in the master plan, but I think it's something that we, we just need to be really focused on as, as a board, which we weren't last time we, we talked about this.
Right. Thank you for that. So with that, I will open up for public comment. Right now, there are three individuals with hands raised. If you, I'm speaking to members of the public now, if you are going to want to speak on this, offer comments on consistency with the master plan, which is, which is different from whether in your mind this is a good idea. I mean, you can, you can, it, it is cognitively possible to find this consistent with the master plan, but you still don't like the idea, which, which is why the board can find it consistent, and the council can decide it doesn't want to do it anyway. But so I just wanted to make that distinction clear about what we are obligated to look at this evening. So Carrie, have you brought over our first speaker?
Yes, yes, I have. Eve Colson?
Great. And then Ann Shosch will be after, after.
No, there's Sprager. I don't know.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
It says Sprager.
Okay. S. Prager. Okay. Ms. Colson, could you, there you go. All right. Welcome.
Thank you.
So, Ms., I'm sorry to immediately talk over you. Mr. Mueller, are you going to swear in folks who are offering comments?
No, we don't, we don't have to. This is not a formal hearing.
Okay, so the formal hearing will happen before council at a later date, so none of, none of you who speak will be sworn in. Go ahead, Ms. Colson. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Eve Colson. I live at 291 Russell Road, a long block down from the heart of the Hun Campus. My backyard fence is on the property line adjacent to the Hun Mall. I've lived in Princeton since 1990, 29 of those years at my current address. I'm here simply to speak in support of the Hun School request to change the zoning designation to E4 on the two parcels of their campus that are currently in an R2 zone. A request that strikes me as imminently reasonable. These parcels are part of the Hun Campus, Hun's business is education. In fact, one might wonder why this wasn't corrected years ago. In, in the 29 years I've been here, the school has, from time to time, renovated and repurposed buildings, and yes, even built new ones. All of this has been appropriate, needed, and never anything that could be construed is either excessive or encroaching on or changing the character of the neighborhood. I have no reason to believe the leadership of the school would suddenly make a radical departure from this measured approach. Should Hun decide to build something new in the future, the plans will have to comply with all ordinances in place at the time, or be subject to an application review process seeking variances for good cause. That Hun has pledged to preserve the Hun Mall in its current natural state available to all in perpetuity, and has specified a limit to the size of any possible new construction on the two-acre property across from Russell Hall. Should they be granted, this change strikes me as generous, more than fair, and a good deal for all in the neighborhood, and I appreciate the opportunity to voice my opinion as we consider whether to refer this to council. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have S. Prager.
Yes, thank you. My name is Stuart Prager, and I live at 186 Russell Road. It's immediately adjacent to the Hun School. It's so close to, we're almost embedded in the Hun Campus, and as a result, I have affection for the school, and in the past has, have supported expansion and remodeling of the school, so it's with reluctance. So it's with reluctance and with no pleasure, uh, that I'd like to state opposition to the ordinance. And what the reason is, I think with the information that we all have available, uh, it's not possible for anyone to draw a conclusion whether their goals are consistent or inconsistent with the master plan. Um, the rezoning gives flexibility to do something that's completely consistent or completely inconsistent. Uh, let me just state, uh, in the sense I've been a supporter, um, the last two years, there was a heavy construction across the street on the right-hand side to remodel the building. In two thousand fourteen, diagonally across from my house on the right-hand side, they built a thirty thousand square foot dormitorium commons area. And then a few years ago, I don't know when exactly, they purchased a, uh, a home diagonally across the street on the left-hand side of my house, and it's now a rental property. Uh, I oppose none of that, I supported it. Uh, it, it didn't improve my quality of life, but it was on existing educational space. More or less, it didn't take away green space. It's their prerogative to, to do what they wish on that land, and I supported it. Uh, this is different. Uh, this takes what is presently a rather, a public viewing, green and open space, and can change it or not change it significantly. Uh, putting a nine thousand square foot building in, in the, uh, the lot that presently includes the Mason House, if it's done one way, it could wipe out a good portion of the thirty trees that are there and take away a lot of the green space and otherwise influence the environment. If it's done another way, it could leave a lot of the open space and greenery and, and very, perhaps be acceptable to the neighbors and the environment. We just don't know. Uh, similarly, and, uh, one of the reasons for their rezoning is it gives them more FAR so that they can do development or construction in other parts of the campus. And, uh, we have no idea what they want to use that for. So one cannot make a judgment on the effect of the FAR change, uh, on the consistency with the master plan. Uh, I'm concerned that there's been confounding information on this, quite confusing, um, to me. Uh, in October, when it came, uh, before the, uh, the council, the trigger and the prime reason was to allow, uh, an infirmary to exist and thus reuse the Mason House. No neighbors were against that, we all support that reuse of the Mason House, but that didn't justify, uh, rezoning the entire lot, which is some ten times bigger than the Mason House. So it, it didn't make any sense. And we were told that the, the ideas for a building are just far down the road, don't worry about it now. Six months later, the building is clearly a central motivation, as is the increased FAR. In terms of other, uh, information that I found confusing, uh, with all due respect, I'm going to point to the, the memo submitted by Mr. Lesko, uh, to the board. And I'll just read some sentences. There's a sentence that says FAR adjustment would allow for necessary and small-scale safety and accessibility improvements. It's a true statement, the FAR would allow for that, but it implies that that is the purpose of the FAR change. And that's not our understanding, and I don't know if that's a true statement.
Uh, Mr. Prager, we can, we can ask the, um, the folks at the Hun School to, to respond to that at some point. We're well over three minutes, I'm wondering if you can please wrap up.
Thirty more seconds. Uh, it also says that, um, the proposal is in keeping with master plan that will preserve open space. That's a truism, you can, you can, you can.
Madam Chair, we'll be enforcing this time limit for all speakers?
He, he asked for thirty more seconds. Mr. Prager, the, um, the open space is the acres that they are permanently preserving that are that long, narrow parcel. I don't think that there's a, a, a question about what that intent is.
Right, but it's not clear that this change will preserve open space consistent with the master plan. It all depends on what happens to the big block that houses the Mason House. So it's a truism to say it'll preserve open space, whether it's consistent or not, I think is unclear. I'll just end with saying, the process.
We need to, we need to move, move on.
Process has been inappropriate, and the Hun School should work with the neighbors to come up with a solution that everybody can agree with. Thank you.
Thanks, thank you for your comments.
The next person to speak is Anne Su.
Shosch.
And then, and thank you, and then Charlotte Friedman.
Thank you.
My name is Anne Shosch, and I live at one twenty-five Hun Road. Although I spent most of my teaching career at another independent school at Princeton, I taught in a part-time capacity for Hun between twenty thirteen and twenty nineteen. I'm also a member of the Environmental Commission. However, tonight I want to speak as a Hun neighbor. I feel that Hun's request is consistent with the master plan. We bought our house in nineteen eighty-three, so I've lived in the neighborhood for almost forty years. In those years, many of the nineteen fifty-era houses of about two thousand square feet have been torn down and replaced with mansions of seven thousand to eight thousand square feet. An entire development of clustered housing, the Russell Estates, was built off Wynton Road. So this area has seen an enormous amount of tear downs and new buildings with drastic increases in imperviable surfaces. The school moved to this area nearly a hundred years ago. And now they are asking that the mall and a not-quite-two-acre lot be rezoned E-four from R-two so that they will have enough FAR to possibly do a bit more building, promised to be no more than nine thousand square feet, just a bit more than many of our new mansions. I want to speak in support of their request for a few reasons, starting with the mall. This is a beautiful green space of a little less than four acres with many, many mature trees, which provide significant ecosystem services to the Edgerstone community in terms of habitat, natural air conditioning, cooling during hot weather, and significant reduction in stormwater runoff because the grass and trees act as natural water-absorbing sponges. Hun's rezoning request includes a commitment that this area will never be developed. Given the rate at which new construction is occurring in our town, that commitment alone is, in my opinion, enough reason to approve the rezoning ordinance. However, by rezoning the Mason House lot as E-four, another advantage is gained, and that is greatly increased setback requirements for any new building, although this has been under discussion tonight. Hun has also volunteered not to make use of the additional FAR for at least five years. The school's proposal is in keeping with the community master plan in that it will preserve open space, the mall, enhance the operations of an existing academic and cultural institution in Princeton, the Hun School, and it will maintain a mix and balance of land uses in the municipality. It deserves the support of the planning board and the council. It certainly has my support. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Uh, the next person is Charlotte Friedman, and then Cameron Stout.
Hi, good evening, my name is.
You're welcome.
Thanks. Um, I live at one oh-two Russell Road, which is directly across the street from the Mason House lot. And I'm opposed to ordinance twenty twenty fifteen, the request by the Hun School to change the zoning of two residential lots from R-two to E-four. In my previous career as an architect in New York City, in my current role as an educator at Columbia and as a resident of Princeton, a town in which my great-grandparents built a house on the corner of Hibben and Mercer, where my grandparents lived next door to them and raised my father, a town where my grandfather's business still stands. I have a vested interest in both educational institutions and the preservation of the character of our town and its neighborhood. With this in mind, I have read and reread the Princeton Master Plan and found the following points emphasized repeatedly and inconsistent with this ordinance. The preservation of neighborhood character and the quality of residential life. The boundaries between different uses, smooth transitions between community and institution. The balance between an institution's needs and their impact on a neighborhood. The protection of trees, open space, and the natural environment. The importance of dialogue and the needs and concerns of neighbors. And finally, ensuring that institutional expansion benefits the community and the institution. Frankly, ordinance twenty twenty dash fifteen benefits the Hun School and a particular subset of neighbors. I trust that the planning board will identify and investigate the inconsistencies with the master plan that this request for zoning change highlights. We are an eclectic neighborhood that is home to a private school. We don't want it to feel like we are a neighborhood within the campus of a private school. Thanks so much for listening, and I look forward to the rest of the meeting. Thank you.
The next individual to speak will be Cameron Stout, and then Ed Fenwick.
Uh, good evening, everyone, I'm Cameron Stout, thank you for giving me the chance to speak. And, uh, um, I am new to Princeton, uh, my wife, who teaches at the Hun School. Uh, we moved from Palo Alto, California, three years ago. I went to Princeton undergrad, and I would simply, I'm not going to weigh in on the technicalities of this. I am a lawyer, but, um, I don't deal with this sort of thing at all. Uh, what I'd like to do is simply to focus just for a second on the fact of, you know, how will this land, uh, be used? As I understand it, um, a nine thousand square foot, um, modest office would be built. And the reason for that, as John Broom has explained to me, is that, uh, the advancement offices of Princeton that are housed right now in the Russell Building would be moved. And the reason for doing that is simply to expand the infirmary. Um, and John has shown me the current infirmary space, which is extremely small, very cramped. There are different offices here and there. And this would allow the school to build out the infirmary, uh, to, especially given COVID, to fit the needs of, of the students and their health, their health issues. And so I, I simply want to focus on how that will be used. And, uh, uh, it will allow for better privacy, uh, for the students and to expand their ability to have good healthcare while staying there, and thirty percent are borders. Um, I have also substitute taught prior to COVID at the school, and I just want to emphasize what an extremely respectful school it is. It had a wonderful reputation when I went to Princeton. Um, and, uh, everything about the school is, uh, it is a very respectful, quiet, wonderful place. And so I am speaking, uh, very much in favor of this change. So thank you very much for giving me the chance to speak today, and I wish you all the best.
Sorry about that, thank you.
Well, I've already moved Mr. Fenwick over, and Stephanie Connell will be next.
Okay.
Good evening. My focus will be.
Mr. Fen, I'm sorry to speak over you, Mr. Fenwick, could you activate your camera, please? Thank you so much, and please do be mindful of the, of the three-minute, um, limit, please. Oftentimes, when we have slides, that goes by the wayside, I just don't want to be unfair. Go right ahead.
My focus will be on the Mason House property tonight, um, and how this ordinance is inconsistent with the master plan in two ways, zone transitions and benefits to the community. The master plan calls for an appropriate transition between established neighborhoods and educational uses, transitions that are smooth and orderly. This is a map of the area, the existing zone four is, is marked. The current educational zone has appropriate transitions between the neighborhood and the school. There is a smooth and orderly transition between the campus and the re- residential community, often, and many of these, as you'll know, are town streets. The proposed ordinance eliminates the transition zone on the east side, the Wynton roadside. And it does that by jumping over Wynton Road and inserting the campus directly into the neighborhood. Something has not done anywhere else in the area. In the current E-four zone, Wynton Road is a smooth and orderly transition to the neighborhood. I live at one oh-two Russell Road. With Wynton Road as the transition zone, our property is an integral part of the neighborhood. As you can clearly see on the map, the proposed change makes our property more a part of the campus than the neighborhood. The loss of a required transition that is smooth and orderly is not consistent with the master plan. The master plan states that when there is expansion proposed into established neighborhoods, it may be approved if it's done in a manner that benefits both the community and the institution. Certainly, the zone change benefits the institution. But does it benefit the neighborhood? No. And will there be negatives? Yes, there will be. Increased activity of students, teachers, and staff going to and from the building. Increased traffic congestion from pedestrian traffic to students. Between classes trough, traffic. Pedestrian traffic crossing Wynton. Increased noise levels, proven by the existing noise levels of their existing buildings. Increased building maintenance activities such as trash removal, et cetera. Increased lighting levels for security and, and safety. There will be large-scale events. Overflow parking, which currently a lot of that property is used for now for overall parking that won't be available to it, is going to force it onto neighborhood streets. And finally, that Hun could do this sets a terrible precedent for the future expansion of, and, and dealing of Hun. Hun suggests that using the Mason House property for educational purposes is better than other imagined uses. That's not a benefit. They want to change the use from residential to educational, and that will have very real and very negative impacts on our community and is prescribed against in our master plan. So as you can see, the ordinance is not consistent with the master plan. First, inconsistency with required transition. Second, negative impacts offsetting the benefit to the community. I trust that you will do two things tonight. One, vote that this proposed ordinance is not consistent with the master plan, and two.
Fenwick, I, I need to ask you to conclude, please.
I will, let me conclude what I said, and, and, and.
You're repeating issues that you've, that you've brought up before, so I just don't want to.
Thank you, no. And, and the last thing I'll say is, I think the Hun School is a great school and should continue in its boundaries. Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you.
The next individual to speak will be Stephanie Connell. Mr. Fenwick, if you could take down your, uh.
I'm, I'm trying to, hang on. I'm sorry, I.
And then we have Teresa Gonzalez, uh, I'll have to move her over, I have not done yet.
Carrie, I, I'm, I'm.
There we go.
Hey, uh, good evening, uh, my name is Stephanie Connell. I am the CFO at the Hun School, but long before that, I was and remain a proud resident of Princeton. I live on Kyler Road, um, I guess, behind Nassau. Uh, when my husband and I moved to Princeton twenty years ago, it was because the community valued educational institutions. And the reason the educational institutions thrive in Princeton is because the residents understand the value that they bring. This delicate balance is sustained because both sides are reasonable and both sides are willing to compromise and respect each other. I believe strongly that this provo- proposed rezoning of a small parcel that has always been part of Hun's campus represents this compromise. Hun understands the importance of the community in which it resides, and I hope the community equally understands the importance of strong institutions. The E-four zone provides ample setbacks and restrictions, even more so than R-two setbacks. And Hun is willing to go beyond those restrictions further and reduce the size and scope of any project, so it would be smaller than a building allowed under the existing zoning and will retain much-needed green space to the benefit of all. And I believe this makes the change very consistent with the master plan. This is a compromise offered by the school to support our community and ensure the future viability of the school. I believe the community recognizes that thriving institutions benefits everyone and therefore will offer. and therefore will offer some support in return by approving this modest rezoning request. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much, Ms. Connell.
Teresa Gonzalez is the last person.
Hi. Good afternoon, everyone. And I'm, I am, put a script together. I didn't, I'm going to speak from the heart. I'm a neighbor. I bought a house in 2006. I have children in the system of Princeton, not at the HUN, but in Princeton High School. And I want to speak from the heart as a neighbor. I'm on 7 Edgarstone Road. I've been here since 2006, so 17 years almost. Getting in and out of my house every day, it's an issue. And the school knows because I've spoken to all of them. And they've been very nice about it. But I want to just let you know that as the school is currently, and again, I have all the respect for education. I am highly educated. I love education and I love the, the neighborhood. When I bought the house, the HUN was there. But had I known the amount of traffic that I can't get out of my house, that I can't walk my dog, that the, the, the birds, we had woodpeckers in that area by the Mason School house, are, what's going to happen to those woodpeckers? What's going to happen to me getting in and out of the house? Literally, I have to plan my mornings so that I don't coincide with their school drops up and down, you know, and all of that. I can't walk my dog when he wants to go because it's the school traffic. And those kids, and I have kids, you know, high school kids, they don't really care who is on the road and they're going to go at the speed that they want to. So it's just speaking from the heart. The amount of traffic that we have every day, you can't park anywhere. By the way, I've taken pictures. I've sent them to the police. They park everywhere because there's not enough space to park. We're not going to build something. By the way, somebody said 9,000 square feet. I don't know any house. My house is 2,300 square feet. My friend's is 4,000. 9,000 is a huge house. What's going to happen to that parking? What's going to happen to the traffic? What's going to happen to the woodpecker family that's in Mason House? I just, speaking from the heart, I'm not a lawyer. I'm not an architect. I'm a mom. I'm a neighbor. All of the, the legalese that I see of in five years will build. I'm like, what does that mean? That they don't do it now, but they'll do it in five years? So maybe we forget about it. What are the regulations for? It's a zoning for a purpose, right? What happens if you start changing zoning so easily? It starts with little by little. Again, 17 years here, and every year, there's like more construction and more things. And we go little by little. And at one point, we're going to go back and say, oh yeah, that'll happen. Little by little, we'll have, Justin, you did a very nice job explaining, but like in five years, I used to work with FDA. If you start doing little changes, you actually will make a different drug that will not be FDA-approved anymore. And my concern is all these little things that happen little by little. We're going to be like, hey, it was approved something and now five years later, it should be approved. And so my, my question to the neighbors was like, do we need to get a lawyer? Because I feel there's a lot of legalese, a lot of talking about master plans. And what I'm telling you is I can't get out of my house in and out. I can't walk my dog. And I know that people can't really park because I've been asked to kind of use my parking driveway for cars. The more you draw, the more you build, the more you're going to just collapse the situation.
Ms. Gonzalez, I'm sorry to cut you off. I, I hear the-
I'm done. I'm done.
That we're sort of going around and around on traffic.
So I'm just giving you my, I'm giving you my, you know, it's, it's really hard as a neighbor. I love this school.
Please.
So my wrap-up is this school and the zoning was approved for a purpose and to me is going to destroy the neighborhood, which is a lot of what you've heard from some of the other neighbors.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, two more, three more individuals have raised their hands. We have Felicia Spitz, Brian, and Arthur Eisenbach.
You would think I know how to use Zoom by now. Thank you very much for all of your service and listening to everyone tonight. One of the charming things about Princeton is the neighborhood school model that we have. This is primarily been something that the public school system has enjoyed. Most of our public schools are neighborhood schools. So the Understone neighborhood is certainly not the only location in town that has school traffic. I, I think it's important to note that for consistency, the HUN school is not asking for anything different than any of the, the public schools currently enjoy. And that the construction or proposed construction down the road is not to expand their staff or to expand the student population. It's to update the campus in a way that will allow the school to continue to thrive in the community. So I certainly hope that it remains consistent with the master plan and your views. And it is just like any of the other public neighborhood schools in Princeton. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian, we need your last name, sir.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Last name is Lo, L-O-G-U-E. I'm a class of 1975 HUN school. Spent 25 years on the alumni board and currently serve on the Board of Trustees. I'm, I'm listening to everything tonight and it, it's very interesting to the, to the people in the neighborhood and to myself as well. The school has always been very conscious of, of our neighbors. And, and not just over the past one or two or three years or five years, but going back to the seventies. And I've had neighbors that have lived in, in Russell and, and Edgarstone, et cetera. We're, we're not asking for much. I, I think it's well within our, our means to expand the Mason, Mason House to our advancement team. Certainly move the advancement team out of Russell to expand on nursing, you know, situation. And as I said, you know, I, I understand the neighborhood, but we're not asking for much. I'll, no, lead my minute and 30 seconds back.
Thank you, Mr. Lo. Next, I think, Mr. Eisenbach, is that correct, Carrie?
Yes, that's correct.
Hi, my name is Arthur Eisenbach, and I think I've remembered to unmute myself. So I've learned something from a year and a half of teaching on Zoom. I am, I graduated from the university four decades ago. But I love Princeton so much that when I was given the opportunity to move from New York City back to Princeton to, to teach middle school, middle school math at the charter school, I jumped at the opportunity. So I'm currently a teacher at the middle school. And I certainly know and value the importance of strong academic institutions. And I bear the HUN school no animus. I want them to be, to continue to be successful as an academic institution. But when I moved back to Princeton, I committed to Princeton and we bought a house. And we bought a house that I knew was in a beautiful neighborhood next to the HUN school. But I felt comfortable buying the house next to the HUN school because Wynette Road, as has been discussed, was a, a natural barrier, a natural transition point between the HUN school and my property, a residential property. And in addition, there was the additional buffer of the Mason House property. And while Mason House property, of course, is owned by the HUN school, it has been for decades a residential property. And I realize this is not the forum for discussing the, the pluses and minuses of what the school is proposing as usage for the Mason House property. But I, I would just like to raise the issue of whether I, as someone moving to Princeton, have the right to rely on zoning in order to set my expectations. Was it, was it foolish of me to buy a house near the HUN school even though I was protected by the, the buffer of a resi, of a residential property because that could change? And I think as we all know, we live in a country now where precedent doesn't seem to matter anymore. Things can be true for dozens or dozens of years, dozens of decades, and out the window they go. So the past doesn't matter because that's what's happening here. The fact that the property has always been residential doesn't matter anymore because they want to do things to it that, the ones who build on their campus in a way that requires them to have that, that space. And again, I will save most of my discussion in front for the town council, but I want to conclude by saying that everything that's been mentioned about the use of this property is all speculative. There is nothing that commits the school other than committing to a certain size building to not exceed a certain square footage. There is nothing that commits the school to any specific type of usage. And we all know, even a 3,000 square foot building that is used in a way that creates a lot of nuisance for the neighborhood can be, can have a significantly negative impact on, on the neighborhood. So it's not simply square footage that's the issue. And I, as a, as a neighbor, as an abutter, want to know a lot more about what they actually will do with this property before the cap, the town goes ahead and rubber stamps their request for this reason.
Mr. Eisenbach.
Thank you.
Don't see anyone else. This is last call for those attending, of which there are now 49. Anybody still wish to speak?
Louise, Rich Goldman.
Seeing none.
Louise.
Excuse me. I see Mr. Goldman, but I, I'm not, I'm just looking for members of the public. So I'm seeing none. I'm going to close the public comment portion of the meeting. Go right ahead, Mr. Goldman.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I, I, I want to be very quick to just make a couple of quick corrections and answer a couple of the questions that were raised by the board. I'm just, I'm sorry to disagree, but I think on your chart, you had the FAR for the R, R1 zone, which is 10%. The FAR for the R2 zone is 12.5%. And with the accessory residence ordinance in place now, in certain conditions, it could be as high as 13.1%. So it's not a big deal, but it, it, we're comparing sizes. That makes a little bit of a difference. I also wanted to note for you all that a permit, a, a conditionally permitted use in the R2 zone includes public or private not-for-profit schools, K through 12, includes daycare facilities and a couple of other institutional-type educational facilities. With the biggest difference being under the R2 zone, those educational facilities would have a much smaller setback, 25 feet versus 75 feet in the E4 zone. And so although the E4 zone is going to permit an educational use, when we're looking at the master plan and what it contemplated, it contemplated, I believe, neighborhood schools, whether you're in the R2 zone or the E4 zone. And in fact, the E4 zone provides much greater protection because of the enhanced setback. The other questions I just wanted to briefly answer. The mall, we believe, everyone believes at the school that the mall was part of the original grant. So yes, it's probably about 100 years or close to it. It's always been part of the campus in all recollection. The Mason House, I think as far as everyone can recall, is, is decades. I mean, at least 40 to 50 years, maybe even longer. And it has served as the headmaster's home, now the head of school for all that time until Betty Johnson donated her home down the street for the purpose of being a head of school house. And so the Mason House became vacant. In COVID, we found the urgent need to expand the infirmary. As you can well imagine, we have borders in our school. We needed overnight facilities. We needed room for testing. And, and so in the interim, we had gotten a temporary, and I emphasize temporary, use variance from the zoning board to allow for us to move some of the office facilities into the empty Mason House so we could start to expand the infirmary. Now, the problem for the school is that because it's temporary, you can't invest too much in the build-out of the infirmary until you know it's going to be permanent because you don't want to rip it all out again at the end of the year. That the current variance goes until the end of December. I did want to ask you to allow John Broom, who was the head of school, to just explain what the significance is of this rezoning to the school. Because I think under the master plan, fostering schools is one of the goals of the master plan. This isn't a whimsical choice. We've been at this current configuration for 100 years. We've never asked for any additional land. So, so when folks worry about, you know, you give it to them now, they're going to ask for more later. Well, maybe in another 100 years, we might. But this has been 100 years. And folks, we're at essentially full build-out. We've got about maybe 12,000 square feet of FAR left. The school cannot do its master planning, its strategic planning for the future on land that's not zoned for the use. It can't get fundraisers, funders to fund projects when the land is not, you know, zoned for the use. So what we did when we heard the concerns of the neighbors, we did three things. We, number one, offered and proposed in writing that we would permanently deed restrict the mall as permanent open space, transferring that FAR to the main campus. But all the houses on either side of that mall will have permanent protection. And when you want to talk about bordering the school, that's a pretty nice piece of benefit to the neighborhood. The other thing with regard to the Mason lot, we proposed a deed restriction, again, permanently with, excuse me, limiting construction to not more than 9,000 square feet of FAR. That includes any FAR retained from the Mason House. So the total build-out on that, we would anticipate the Mason House might not be there. But if it were, it would be part of that 9,000 square feet of FAR. We've looked at, we've just asked an architect to just take a, you know, quick and dirty look at what that might be. It would be basically a 3,000 square foot footprint, two stories above grade, one story below grade, 9,000 square feet. It fits well within a 75-foot setback around the entire envelope of the property, I might add. We didn't have David's interpretation in hand to, 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 to think about a, a zero setback. We would want that setback anyway. But this, this is a relatively small footprinted building. And the school is very anxious to begin the planning. But if I can, just let John Broom have a few minutes to talk about why a school needs to be in a position to enhance its facilities.
Rich, can I ask you a quick question?
Yeah.
I was a little confused about 9,000 square feet and the Mason House. Does the 9,000 square feet include the square footage of the Mason House?
Yeah, that's what I was, that's what I was not so clearly trying to say. So either the Mason House would be included as an existing structure in that calculation. Or if the Mason House was torn down, a new building would also not more than 9,000 square feet. So the Mason, the Mason House lot would never have more than 9,000 square feet of floor area under the ordinance on that lot.
Totally. Thank you. Thank you.
John?
Sure. Thank you, Rich. Thanks for all your-
I'm sorry to talk over you, Mr. Broom. David Cohen had his hand up and I was muted, so he didn't hear.
Yeah, just a clarification question along the same lines, and maybe it's for Derek as well. But Rich, you mentioned one story below grade- Rich, you mentioned one story below grade. I think that our basement definition exempts basements from FAR, not just for residential uses, but for others, for instance, the Triumph.
Yeah, let's, because I don't think so. I think a
Yeah, let's ask Derek, because I remember the Triumph going in the post office didn't count the floor area in the basement.
Right. I think it depends on whether it's a storage area or under undisturbed ground.
I'm gonna have to, excuse me, there's the Tiger was in the CB and the Borough, which has a different zoning requirement for FAR. I'm gonna have to check the footnotes and I don't want to keep you on hold here, so I'll come back to the conversation when I find the answer.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Bridger.
I always had something to do with how many feet of the basement is above grade, as I recall from years ago, but let's let Derek take a look.
You mean whether the ceiling of the basement comes up above ground level? Is that what you mean?
Yeah, it was something like that, I think.
Yeah. Basements if they're too far out of the ground.
Yeah. So maybe while John is talking, Derek can figure that one out.
Mr. Broom, go right ahead. I'm sorry to have stepped on you there.
No, no, that's fine. Thanks. I wish I could comment more intelligently on the basement question, but thanks so much for your time and attention tonight. First of all, just to say that we love our neighborhood. We love our neighbors and I've met with most of the folks who've spoken tonight and I think we have a good relationship and I hope it persists despite whatever disagreement we have here. We would never do anything that would hurt the neighborhood because it's where we live too. And we would never want to pollute the, the waters we swim in. So the, first of all, we are completely built out in terms of FAR. We don't ask for additional FAR lightly and haven't for a hundred years. What we've done mainly is just keep renovating buildings, most of which are from the nineteen sixties or even before, to keep them fresh and usable. At, at this point, we do need the additional FAR, which is part of the point of the mall. But we're, we're very happy to also permanently protect that from development. And the Mason House lot, we do very much need to keep offices there in order to free up space within our Russell Hall for an infirmary that's desperately needed. Most of the conversations I've had with neighbors concerns a future use of the mall for any future building, which is why we offer those two can, two compromises. We thought about the nine thousand square feet and the five-year delay. I, I can assure you, the school has no plan, no desire to increase enrollment, no plan, no desire to increase traffic or parking or any of the other nuisances that could come with new construction. It's purely for program needs because, as you know, kids' needs keep evolving. Education keeps evolving and we need to keep up with that. So just for instance, we, one of our most popular programs now is computer science, which didn't even exist a few years ago. We had one course, now we have seven. We have engineering, we have robotics, which is a really active club. None of these places have their own space within the school at the moment. And some of these things require special space. We're not talking about just regular classrooms, but specialized space to keep our program fresh. Our art program, it's now become a requirement because you think the kind of creative skills and the collaboration that comes with visual arts is really useful for kids. I think we've doubled our art offerings and enrollment over the last few years. Those are specialized art studio classrooms. So I can't say what use the school might want to make of any additional space on that Mason House lot in five years or ten years or twenty years. Because I don't know exactly what they'll be, but I can tell you, it's because the school needs to keep fresh. It needs to continue to improve its spaces for the sake of, of program enhancement. And anything we do on campus, we try to make as attractive and is you know, something for the neighbors can be proud of, is, is we can.
Thank you, John.
Mr. Bridger, I see you turned your camera on. Does that mean you have an answer or?
I just got a text from somebody. Jim Kyle said they are included, but I see there's a note in the, the footnotes. There's like thirty footnotes on the two forty-six, which is bulk requirements for all the zones in town and I don't think basement is included. It, it is included in other zones because there's a specific footnote that, that speaks about it. So as long as the basement meets the definition of a basement, which would be that, that level of distance between the average grade around the perimeter of the foundation and the bottom of the first floor joists is less than four feet. It's, it's a basement and it would be exempt from FAR.
Okay, thank you. That's
The right to. Jim comes back.
Yeah. Sorry. Mr. Cohen? Yeah.
I have two more questions, one for Derek. Don't turn off your camera yet.
Okay.
So whatever prospective use does end up going on the Mason site, is there a requirement that parking has to be located on the same lot as the use for which it is designated? In other words, if there's a use that goes on that Mason House site that requires ten cars, would those cars have to be provided on the Mason House site under the zoning or could they be provided elsewhere on the campus?
They could be provided on the campus just as they are now, would be my interpretation.
Anywhere within the E four zone, you mean?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sure.
And a question for Justin. I wonder if you could reflect a little bit on this question of FAR specifically. And this is something I hadn't thought of until listening to the conversation tonight, but you know, if the, the strip of land, which I think has about twenty-five thousand square feet of, of floor area associated with it, is not used for that floor area, then effectively you have a higher floor area ratio on the remainder of the of the campus. And I wonder if you could just reflect on that in terms of the master plan. If you're starting to creep up and have, you know, a point one seven or a point one eight, I don't know exactly what the math would be as the FAR, how do you find that in terms of consistency with the master plan?
Well, I think anytime they would try to do something like that, it would have to come through the site plan process. So I mean, that'd be a case by case basis where if they decided they're going to add a, you know, that a bigger building somewhere where it shouldn't be versus if they're going to make the changes they've said about, you know, adding accessibility features to a variety of buildings, I, I think it would have to be a case by case basis on that.
Thanks.
Do, does Princeton have any, any zones in which a density bonus is conferred for, associated with the preservation of open space or other considerations that are considered public benefit?
We certainly do for our cluster development.
That, that's what I was thinking and I, I just didn't know for sure. Okay. Are there other, Mr. Bridger?
Yes, um, excuse me, um, I am mistaken. The definition does exclude basements, but only for one and two family dwellings. So.
Okay.
That's what I
It would, it would apply here.
Okay.
My, my mistake. Thank you.
Good. I'm glad we got that cleared up.
Madam Chair, we, we do have a Jim Kyle, who's a professional planner. If you had questions for him or felt you wanted to hear from him, I, I think all of the issues have been touched upon. But I just wanted to let you know that he's here if, if the board wanted to hear from our expert.
Okay, thank you. That's good to know. I'm, I want to talk a little bit about the setback question that David raised earlier. Justin or Derek, what, what is the setback in the residential zone there? Justin, I think it was probably on your, one of your tables. I'm sure that it was. I just don't remember what, was it twenty-five feet?
Twenty-five from the front, fifteen from the side and fifteen from the rear.
But this, but Hun representatives, Mr. Goldman, you were saying that the, the assumption not having thought through this in the way that Mr. Cohen did, the assumption was seventy-five foot setback would apply to that lot that the Mason House is on now. That's correct?
That's what
I'm trying to get to the, to what is a good number of a setback that we could?
Our, our interpretation was the seventy-five foot envelope around the perimeter of the lot as compared to, and I think you just heard it. Somebody could build something within sixteen feet of those houses behind us. The rear yard setback, I think was to be sixteen feet versus seventy-five feet. And by the way, it could be a day school, sixteen feet from the rear yard. It could be a day school. Like if we had no use for that property because we couldn't use it and we didn't need an R two property, you know, we could sell it to a day school who could build twelve and a half percent FAR, sixteen feet from the rear property line, at least for us under the E four zone, which I believe was always intended as a buffer zone in and of itself. And that's why the seventy-five feet was created. You know you have a very significant envelope around the property and, and we would hold to that. I mean, we're, we're going to hold to that seventy-five feet for that building.
Well, that, that is something that I think the board might consider in a recommendation, if not a seventy-five foot setback, some, some setback that is, you know, very generous from the, from Wyman, from the front. And if they're seventy-five works for, you know, maybe that's the right number, but.
I, I sort of feel like the scale of whatever building could go on here at nine thousand square feet. As one of the members of the public commented, that is kind of bigger than a house. So having a bigger setback makes sense.
So relative to that nine thousand square feet, that's not building potential that is confined to this lot, is it? It's, it's conferred by the lot, but it could be realized anywhere on campus except in the mall strip.
So the, the change to the E four zone would create a potential for up to thirteen thousand square feet of FAR. And what we had proposed was a deed restriction that limited this particular
Okay.
to nine thousand, the remaining four thousand would be allocated to the main campus.
Okay, I, I should have understand that, that, but I'm, I'm glad that you repeated it. Mr. Mueller?
Yeah, and Rich, that does not include the FAR, the floor area from the mall, correct?
Correct. The floor area from the mall would also be transferred to the main campus. We're hoping this will last us the next hundred years, but you know, compared to our total of FAR, this is all very small amounts of, of add-on.
Partly where I was going with that is it's my assumption that the FAR that derived from the zone change would enable you to expand the infirmary in the way that you've referred to repeatedly that you envision needing to do. Am I misinterpreting that?
It may not, it may not be particularly relevant, this particular issue to the infirmary because the infirmary will be expanded within Russell Hall.
I see.
So
It will displace other things that are in Russell Hall now.
Right. So what happens is right now we've replaced some of those offices across under the variance at, at Mason House. We need a permanent home for those folks, a few more folks, expand the infirmary in Russell Hall and also begin to plan for future program needs at the school where we can go out to our funders with some confidence that, you know, you're not planning for nothing. That's, that's how this, that's how schools work. That's how Princeton University does it. That's how PDS does it. It's, it's very, very hard to do your strategic plan, line up your funders for future projects if they're not permitted under the zoning ordinance.
Yeah.
But what we've tried to do is find that compromise. You know, our, our neighbor said, boy, you've done a lot of renovations lately. Can we have a break at the, at the Mason House lot? And we said, yeah, we'll, we'll, we will agree not to build anything new there for five years. So there'll be a break. Now frankly, we probably need that five years to do our strategic planning and fundraising. As to what could go there, we honestly, and John can confirm this, we really don't know. We've, we've talked about the idea of a, a student art gallery. John mentioned this, the robotics facility. It's going to be all, it, it's all what is the state of the art that's needed in, in an independent school education? People are paying a lot of tuition for independent school tuition. They want the best facilities you can give.
And, and when and if that happens, that will come back to this board. I, I don't want to go down the rabbit hole of speculating about what you will do because it's really beside the point of that, or at least mostly beside the point that we're here to.
Absolutely. And by the way, I mean, again, we've talked about this because we're trying to find ways to make this very compatible with the neighborhood. We've actually talked about the idea of maybe a, a building, not a box that's three thousand square feet, but maybe it looks like two smaller buildings with an, you know, a bit of a, a, a walkway between the two. We, we're, we're hoping to design something that folks are proud of and happy when we know what the needs are, right? But first we have to get to the needs. And to get to the needs, we need the zoning so we can plan. But again, out of the total amount of building that we have and put into a relatively small campus over a hundred years, this is really a very, very modest expansion. And it's not land we bought to do this, right? As I think that was a really great question. The mall and the Mason House lot have been in the family here for, you know, one fifty years, the other a hundred.
Okay. One other question I wanted to raise, which I think is relevant to, or at least adjacent to master plan, is, is that of traffic. And could you speak at all, maybe Mr. Broom, to the efforts that you might have taken or planned to take to reduce auto dependence? I know it's tough based on where you're located, but I'd really love to know what, if anything, you're doing to try to reduce traffic impact even from current levels, never mind after you build more.
Right. Well, we think the number one thing we could do to help the traffic problem is to adjust our ratio so that we have more boarding students and fewer day students who are coming back and forth every day because the borders are there, you know? And formerly we have had as many as a hundred and seventy plus borders. And after COVID hit, we're down to about a hundred and thirty at the moment. So our plan is to, you know, we think now that COVID is over, we can boost that up. Part of the infirmary is for borders. That's one of the reasons we think it would be attractive to prospective boarding families to have a decent infirmary to take care of their kids overnight, for instance, but we think that would be a really significant thing. And we've done all kinds of things on the enforcement level and I have to admit to our neighbors that we know it's not perfect, but we invite the police to come as often as possible and we, we even offered to have school employees posted around the neighborhood to watch for our students' cars to make sure they're behaving. But the police told us you can't do that. We've asked for traffic bumps. I know that's not allowed anymore. We paid for some of those electronic speeding lights. So we're, we're doing what we can, but I, I certainly can feel the pain of the neighbors. Well, I have to say that, that not the neighbors on this tall, but some of our neighbors are not the greatest drivers either, so.
Well, I have seen traffic calming devices installed in recent years, so maybe that's not a completely lost cause. Mr. Mr. Lesko, I see your hand up.
Yes, Madam Chair, your question reminded me that we never read the one written statement, so I want to make sure we get that into the record.
Thank you so much. I
Can I do that now?
Yes, please. Thanks.
Great. And this is from Tammy L. Sands of Wyman Road. She made sure to note that she's writing as a resident, not as the chair of the PEC. So it says, Dear Acting Director Lesko, Planning Department staff, Madam Chair Wilson and Planning Board members, many thanks for the opportunity for my concerns to be publicly heard despite me being unable to attend this evening, evening's meeting. My ask this evening is that the Planning Board carefully consider if the Hun School's rezoning request is consistent with the forward direction of the master plan, specifically the green building and sustainability element of the current MP. For instance, how will E four rezoning avoid, minimize and mitigate adverse impacts on the landscape and environment compared to the current R two zoning? How will E four rezoning decrease the amount of impervious surface to reduce stormwater runoff and reduce energy use compared to the present R two structure, given the intent of a much larger and higher building? How will a new E four rezone structure enhance carbon sequestration, sustainability, preservation and mitigate flooding? How will E four rezoning support non-fossil fuel transportation? How will E-four rezoning support non-fossil fuel transportation and/or reduce all types of motorized traffic? A rezoning request that should be scrutinized is one that will encroach upon residential neighborhoods and their character, as well as the quality of life for the residents living in these neighborhoods. As a result, I would like to ask how rezoning this property will benefit the aforementioned Princeton residents. Additionally, I would like to highlight that this rezoning request is not to support more affordable housing in Princeton, which is desperately needed, and a more appropriate request for the community as a whole. Many thanks.
I can answer that question, at least from the Hun School's perspective. You know, I, I view, I view the rezoning and the added FAR as giving us the opportunity to address a number of outdated, inefficient buildings that were built in the sixties and seventies and to provide new buildings where appropriate that will meet these important environmental standards. Though, first of all, we want them to, but they will be required to. And new construction will also impose upon us the, the requirement to meet new stormwater regulations. As we know, those are changing almost every few months. Potential for solar energy. I mean, all of those good things that were on that list, which we all believe in, are not available to you if you have a bunch of buildings built in the nineteen seventies and you can't work with them, right? So I actually think that letter is very supportive of the need to provide these opportunities to modernize the school where needed. You are mute.
I see that. Thank you. Other questions or comments from board members about consistency with the master plan and the kinds of things that we might include in a... I see Mr. Bridger's hand up again. Go ahead, Derek. You're on mute, though.
I just wanted to, you know, make clear that even though Hun says they will, you know, offer a seventy-five-foot setback off the road, the code calls for, from the property line, just so it's on the record. So that's it. Thank you. Excuse me.
Okay. Mr. Cohen?
That's actually a great cue for me to move that I would like to, I, I feel much better having had this conversation that I wish we had had six months ago as a board. And I feel comfortable that the existing zoning provides adequate protection to the residential neighborhood, except for the fact that there's that ambiguity about what the, what the setback from Wyman Road should be, since it's not a zone boundary. So I would like to suggest that that the board find this ordinance consistent with the master plan, with the provision that, that be clear, the front yard setback along Wyman Road be clarified or along any public roadway. I think that the way that the zoning was created, and thanks to Justin for doing the historic research about that, I don't think those other private schools have public roads internal to their campus, that Hun is the only one. And so there wasn't a perceived need for having setbacks to roads, you know, to, to street lines that were internal to the campus. But I think we do need that in this case. And so I'd like to suggest we find it consistent, but that we recommend the council institute that the seventy-five-foot setback should be to the zone boundaries or to, to the street lines of public roads.
Okay, that is a, David posed that in the form of a motion. Is there a second?
You're talking specifically about cartways, not right-of-way.
Well, I think, I, I think I'm referring to the right-of-way as we determine setbacks in every other circumstance.
Yeah, that's, I think that's better. The cartway could always be expanded or whatever, but yeah, thank you.
Really good distinction to make. Thank you for that. Is there a second? Any planning board member interested in seconding David's motion to find this zone change consistent with the master plan with, is that, is that you, Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes, I will second.
Okay, motion made by David Cohen, seconded by Owen O'Donnell. Carrie, would you give us a roll call vote, please?
Certainly. Ms. Capizoli?
Yes.
Mr. Chow?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Ms. Sacks?
Yes.
Mr. Body, uh, Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
And I, I agree wholeheartedly with David that this was a really helpful conversation. So thanks, everybody, for hanging in. Thank, thank you to all the attendees who spoke to us. And so, Mr. Golden, Ms. Brom, and Mr. Kyle, sorry, we didn't hear from you, but
Yeah, well.
No need tonight.
We appreciate the effort. We appreciate the effort. We certainly appreciate the unanimous vote. And thank you for your time. And, and I know it's a, every, every issue is a hard issue, but we appreciate the thoughtfulness. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Madam Chair, if I could request that we take our nine PM break and stretch our legs and get something to drink?
Sounds like a great idea. Let's take ten.
Lesko has his hand up. I'm sorry. I think he's gonna ask us not to take a break.
Keep going. Now, I just want to remind all, everyone that's tuned in that this will be heard for final approval at the council on June thirteenth.
June thirteenth. Okay, that's good to know. Good. So take ten. See everybody back at nine oh nine or thereabouts. Thank you.
Thanks.
Video again. Thank you. So next up, we have a hearing. A J. M. Owen, I hope I'm pronouncing that properly. This is preliminary and final major subdivision and site plan at fifty-four and ninety-four Van Dyke Road, block four five zero one, lots one and two, file number P nineteen nineteen dash six nine zero SPF slash P. Mr. Mueller, is it noticed?
Yes. Application service are in order and the board has jurisdiction. If, if I may make a suggestion, whether, since Mr. Potter isn't here, it makes it a little more difficult. But we have two items on the agenda, and it's now ten after nine. And I thought it might be worth basically asking the attorneys how long they thought their cases would take. And if it looks like it's going to take the rest of the evening, we could tell the university representatives that we're not going to get to you. We'll take jurisdiction, but we'll, we'll carry it to another date. So that's just, that's just a thought, rather than sitting around and then eleven o'clock comes and we still haven't gotten it.
That is a very good thought. So, Mr. Kennedy, I see that you unmuted yourself. Are you here? Go ahead.
Madam Chair, I'm, I'm here for the first of the two applications, fifty-four Van Dyke. I'll, I'll be honest, I'm notoriously bad at estimating times. However, we do really have just one witness, Jim Kamalik, our planner and engineer. I don't want to oversimplify the, the subdivision, but we do expect some testimony perhaps from the neighbors. But it is a relatively simple, variance-free subdivision. So I, I would hope an hour, I think, would be appropriate, would certainly get through our testimony. I think a lot depends on what Mr. Potter has planned.
Yeah, I know. He, he reached out to me as he reached out to Carrie. We talked to him today. He indicated to me he had one expert. Ryan referred to Mr. Thonnet, who's the expert. And Bill indicated that he might put on two other witnesses as well. So I don't know how much, I don't know how useful that is, but I just, just put it out there.
Mr. Dugrazia, who's the attorney for the university, is also here. If you wish to, I could promote him or just have him speak. What would you like me to do?
Uh, why don't you promote him if he has any thoughts on this? He can share them.
We did talk about a potential date if this situation arose.
Okay. Hi, Mr. Dugrazia. So you're representing the university, which we may or may not get to tonight. Would you like to? I, I, I think that it, it's a safe assumption that the, the application before you was going to take at least an hour and a half and, and very possibly more. And, and that puts us at eleven, and we are going to stop at eleven. So whether we're done with that application or not, so.
We'll be happy to first.
No, that, that's.
I know, I know. I, I just wanted to see Ryan's reaction. Anyway, yeah, so, um, so we expect this to go past eleven. I, I mean, if there's a chance, we would like to, to hold on. But if we really think, is the other attorney present? Did he show up or?
Does not appear that he is present at this point, correct, Carrie?
Yes, I don't see Mr. Potter.
Maybe his engineer could comment on what's going on, if he knows.
So, yes, yeah, maybe that's, maybe that will be helpful because I think that would have, will be a big factor in how long it goes this evening if it's just one person testifying or a couple.
Yeah.
And Mr. Thonnet is being promoted to panelist.
Okay.
Hello, may I speak?
Yes, you may. Yes.
Bill has been on this, uh, uh, meeting for the entire time. I've been getting messages back and forth about various things while we watched what was going on.
We do have one person who falls in. Is he, is he on his phone?
Uh, no, I, I don't think so. I think he was on, on as a Zoom participant.
Mr. Thonnet, did you say Bill?
Yeah.
Attorney Bill Potter.
No, Attorney Bill Potter.
There's an AT, there's a fixes app. I mean.
We need to see his name.
There's a Jeffrey Orleans with his hand up, maybe Bill.
He is Attorney Bill Potter's client, so.
Can I, can I suggest, can I suggest that we ask Mr. Potter to raise his hand?
Thank you.
That's a great suggestion. Mr. Potter, if you are in the meeting at this point, would you please raise your hand? Well, that's not, yeah, he's not, he's not in the meeting right now. So, anyway.
So why don't you guys get started? I'll be, we'll be here if it looks like you guys have a, it looks like it's going to go on forever and you guys take like a break or a pause. Maybe we can handle it at that time. Otherwise, we'll just see what happens. You know, it's a, it's my understanding if we don't get heard, that we, we, we would be on the June sixteenth date. And to be heard in June would be really important for this project. And again, we're going to be very quick. I should say it's a temporary project where it's built and then removed eventually. So we don't expect it will be a very long presentation. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Dugrazia. So let's move ahead. Mr. Bodykheimer?
I, I just, I just wanted to say that I'm going to need to recuse myself for the university item, so I'm part for that.
When the time comes, yes. Okay, good. Mr. Dobremilsky?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Can you set the table here?
Yes.
And, and if you could raise your right hand, you swear or affirm the testimony about the truth.
I do.
So sworn.
Thank you. Dan Dobremilsky, Dan Dobremilsky and Associates, providing some planning input this evening using the planning report from Michael Laplace dated April fourteenth. So this is the preliminary final major subdivision for fifty-four Van Dyke Road, block four five oh one, lots one and two. The project is made up of two existing lots located in the easterly wooded section of Princeton on the south side of Van Dyke Road. The total area of the subdivision is ten point seven six acres. It is surrounded by single-family homes to the north by All Saints Church, which is across Van Dyke Road and set back a distance near the top of a sloping hill. A tributary of Harry Brook runs through the site. Although the total project area is ten point seven six acres, the area of new disturbance is approximately three point one acres for the construction of three new homes. The currently, the majority of the site is heavily wooded, predominantly along the stream corridor. The remainder of the site serves as yard area around two existing houses, which will be maintained as lawn. However, it has numerous trees. The proposed development could result in the removal of about a hundred and eighty-three trees. The required number of replacements is a hundred and ninety-nine. The proposed landscape consists of forty new trees, but there are a hundred and fifty-nine remaining to be compensated. The subject premises is located in the R-two zone, where the building lots are subject to use in both regulations pursuant to ten B ten, two fifty-five, and ten B two forty-six. The proposed subdivision is compliance with the zoning requirements. Subject property is not located in the designated historic zone, zone district and does not contain any structures or archaeological objects of historic or cultural significance. The applicant should demonstrate that the proposed subdivision will result in new development that will be in keeping with the rustic nature of the site. Strong consideration should be given to tree preservation and landscape enhancement as well as to the management of stormwater and the protection of the existing Harry Brook Tributary. You have staff and advisory comments on stormwater easements, landscape, driveways, bike lanes, construction noise, survey details, and outside agency requirements. I think that's, hopefully that's.
Dan, Dan, let me, Dan, let me ask you, what's the date of, of the memo you're reading?
That was from April fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, from Michael Laplace.
Okay, because you indicated, maybe he indicated, three new residences, minus N is, it's something too.
Yeah, it's confusing the way, the way, so the way it was written was, was confusing. So I apologize for that. There's two existing lots. There will be four when they're done.
So two new, and I think one, well, we'll let the applicant speak to it, but one is
Yeah.
an addition garage or something. Mr. Cohen?
Yeah. The report also mentioned that the subdivision is conforming. I had a question that I emailed Derek shortly before the meeting. It seems it relies on the flag lot section of the ordinance. And as I read the flag lot section, it talks about creating two lots. In all instances, it doesn't, I didn't find any reference to the ability to create three lots using the flag lot scenario. So I'd like Derek to give his read on how this is conforming.
Thank you, Chairman, or Councilman Cole. I think under section two seventy, or two forty-seven point one, item three, which refers to the zone that this property is in, it says for a flag lot and one other lot to be created from a lot or a consolidated lot or lots. I don't think the two are separable. I think they created a two, two flag lots, which comply with the flag lot ordinance. And then the other two lots are just a regular subdivision. I don't think they're mutually exclusive. But I think it's a complying application.
David, you have your hand?
Yeah, I don't know. And maybe Ryan can. Yeah, I don't know. And maybe Ryan can as well. The way I understood what you just read, Derek, I don't see how you can create two flack lots. It sounded like, to me, like you could create two lots either from a single lot, from consolidated lots, you know, that there were several ways that you could get a lot, that you could turn into two lots. But I didn't hear anything that you read that said you could create three lots from, from a single lot.
From two flag lots.
Well, one thing I'll say, we are, we're starting with two lots and resulting in two flag lots. So the, it, or the, the initial condition is lots one and two, 54 and 94. And the end result will be two traditional lots and two flag lots.
Maybe when we get a little bit further, you can show a picture that, that makes clear, that makes clear what, what you're just describing. Because I mean, I certainly understand what David is saying and what, so.
All right, we can, we can let it.
May, maybe, maybe that will become clear as the applicant makes its presentation. My understanding is that this application has been, is a revised plan. Because the, the boards and commissions and committee memos that we have are very old and they are commenting on an earlier iteration of this applicant's intended plan. And so actually, one question that I had before we get into everything, and this is for anybody on, on our professionals or staff. Did the applicant work with us on revising a plan through some kind of a concept plan process? Or did they? Maybe this is a question for the applicant. Did you see those comments from boards, commissions, and committees? And revise your plan to address their negative comments?
Perhaps, Madam Chairwoman, I'm certainly happy to yield to the professionals here, but I guess the answer to that is yes, there was no formal concept. But I think as you'll see in our presentation, there's been a series of iterations. You notice the file number here is 19, where initially the applicant proposed a completely conforming five lot traditional subdivision. When I say traditional, I don't mean traditional as opposed to cluster, but without including a flag lot with an actual road. And then working with staff and importantly, working with the neighbors and their attorney and professional. I have to give credit for, to Mr. Potter for this pun here, but he gave up a lot in, in changing things from five lots to four. And, and as part of our presentation, we'll kind of go through the iterations there while that. So I, I don't believe we have been before the board for a formal concept.
No, you have, you have not.
The initial complete application as, as filed was for a variance free conforming five lot subdivision. And it was then working with, with staff and representatives from the neighbors that we were able to change the design, to remove the road and importantly, and, and maybe unfortunately for, for us, but we, we, we went in this, you know, being good neighbors to remove one of the lots from five lots to four. And as, as we step through our presentation, we'll kind of go through the iterations of the plans that were worked on with staff.
Okay. One other question for staff before we go to the presentation. Are there any, any red flags that anybody wants to raise on the front end? This is sort of a boilerplate question that we ask of everybody. I'm not trying to throw shade on this applicant in particular at all. I'm not seeing any hand. Oh, Mr. Purcell?
No, I was just jumping in to say, um, the only red flag that may be raised this evening is that the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection is proposing to implement emergency rules in the middle of, they're, they're proposing that they will, they will publish those emergency rules in the middle of June in a couple of weeks, which will completely change the requirements for stormwater management. So a red flag for the applicant is that their current stormwater management, which I think Mr. Scoopian will testify to, we have deemed meeting the current regulations. If not approved this evening, then they may be required to redesign their stormwater management to meet the emergency regulations if and when NJDEP actually files them.
Okay, good to know. Okay, so let's go ahead and hear the applicant's presentation.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chairwoman, members of the board, uh, and, and staff and outside consultants, just, my name is Ryan Kennedy from Stevenson Lee for the applicant, who is here this evening along with his neighbor. Well, we have one applicant, we do have two owners essentially, current residents of 54 and 94 Van Dyke Road, who collectively own almost 11 acres. And as, uh, was kind of outlined in the initial memo from Michael Laplace, originally filed and proposed a conforming five lot subdivision with keep, which kept the two existing homes, created three conforming lots, and built a, a new traditional road with a cul-de-sac off of Van Dyke Road serving the new homes. Working with staff and the professionals of some of the neighbors, we were able to essentially agree to modify the plan to give up a lot. And, and as a result, remove a lot of the impervious surface, not just that that home would have had, but that the road would have created. And by having this shared driveway scenario, we are essentially reallocating an existing driveway to 54 Van Dyke. And creating that, relocating it and, and creating a shared driveway then for the two new homes to be built on this site.
Thanks.
Madam Chairwoman, you mentioned, I believe, in, in passing a kind of a variance for a garage. The initial application did have one variance associated with the property owner's desire to change or keep the garage that in that particular configuration would have required a neighborhood character variance. With the, the loss of lots and the reconfiguration, that's no longer a part of the project or necessary. So I know that was, you know, as you're going through the files, you probably saw a garage sketch and some information about a, a possible variance. Once the revised conforming plan was developed, the applicant stepped away from that desire and it was no longer really needed as part of the project.
And Ryan, I apologize, I apologize for interrupting. Um, I, I've been getting some texts from Bill Potter and I just was able to reach him. He says he is blocked and cannot get on. Um, Justin, is there anything you can do about this?
Yeah, I believe I have his email somewhere. I'll get it figured out.
Okay, okay. If you can't get his email, call me back and I could, I could give it to you. Okay?
Okay. Do you want to just give it to me real quick so I don't have to look it up? Or I'll find it.
Okay, good. Thank you. I'm sorry, Ryan.
Sure. And, and just for the record, because I'm looking at a report with it on it, it's Potter, two Rs, E X, P O T T E R R E X X C S dot com. If that's, I don't want him to be excluded for sure. So as I was saying, that, that variance condition is no longer part. When we're talking about the four lot subdivision, you can essentially ignore that information.
Okay, but give me, give me the email address again.
Mr. Mueller, you need to mute yourself.
Yeah, I'm very sorry.
All right.
So as, as we were saying, we gave up and, you know, I was giving Mr. Potter credit with the delightful pun, but giving up a lot, both literally as one lot and, you know, uh, some of the benefit of, of the subdivision in working with the revised plan. I, I, you'll hear from Jim Kamalik, who, you guys have heard perhaps as, as recently as, as last meeting, but as our professional planner and engineer who worked in the site, you'll hear about the stormwater mitigation and the iterations of that. And I think you'll hear that the iterations of the stormwater plan have improved at each time, obviously from the five lot to the four lot. But you'll also hear while it conforms, as Mr. Purcell had kind of summarized of the staff comments, it also was an improvement over the existing condition. So not only where we, was the neighbor and, and quite literally the, the applicant and his neighbor owner will, this is their homes and they're looking to be good neighbors and live there themselves, reduce the scale of the project and are actually looking to improve from a stormwater perspective, from the existing conditions through the plan that our, our planner and engineer has, has put together. So with that, I, I'd, I'd like to have Jim Kamalik introduce himself. I, I would ask that he be sworn in and, and qualified as an expert, but maybe we should wait for Mr. Mueller to return to do that. I think he stepped away for a second and I want to make sure we get that on the, the record.
Yes, stepping away is unprecedented. And, and I don't know that any of the rest of us is.
I am, as an attorney authorized to take, but I, I would prefer for the, for the record, that it be someone not, not, not as closely associated with the applicant as I am.
Right.
And I've sent Mr. Potter, Mr. Potter, my panelist link. I think Jerry's calling me now, so I'll let him know.
Yeah, tell him to come back to the meeting. We need him to swear in witnesses. And I will ask for future reference whether any of us is empowered to do that. I, I probably am, but I don't want to take the chance.
I, I teach a fascinating class with our, our county clerk on the duties and abilities of notaries public and I'm happy to send you an 8,000 page book that will help you fall asleep after our meeting this evening that could go through the details of who can take sworn statement.
Jerry should be back in a second.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Mueller, we need you to unmute yourself and swear in Mr. Kennedy's witnesses.
Okay, all of Mr. Kennedy's witnesses, if you could raise your right hand. Is that just you, Jim?
Yeah, it's just gonna be Jim.
Yes, Jim, okay. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
So sworn or affirmed? Please state your full name and spell your last name.
James Kamalak, C H M I E L A K.
Thank you.
Uh, thanks, Jerry. Jim, if you could, I know you've been before this board many times. It was recently at their last meeting, but if you could give the board the benefit briefly of your credentials, so I could have you accepted as an expert engineer and planner.
Sure. Again, James Kamalak can show resources, licensed professional engineer and professional planner with a degree in the field of civil and environmental engineering from Rutgers, the College of Engineering. And I've been practicing site planning, civil engineering, and planning for over 20 years.
We accept your qualifications. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. As we normally do, I'd like to, we, we have provided to, to the planning office, a, a series of, of slides. With, with your okay, I'd like to share my screen and have Mr. Kamalik and I start going through them. Perhaps we'll, we'll mark this entire set as A1, Mr. Mueller?
Yes, exactly.
All right. Thank you. I, I will say for the record, I believe the version that we sent did not have the numbers on the bottom. I, I noticed that and, and made sure they were numbered, so they were easier to follow. Otherwise, this is what had been provided last week.
But that's, that's the only, that's the only difference, Ryan?
That is correct, that is correct. The, the numbers hadn't, didn't show up on that version.
Okay.
So, uh, Jim, as, as we normally do, if you could first, let's, let's start orienting the board towards to where 54 and 94 Van Dyke Road in the township, former township are in relation to some other landmarks and, and, and parts of Princeton.
Sure. Um, to the east of Harrison Street, uh, along Terry, Terry Heen Road, we have two lots here that are located in the R2 zoning district. They're both approximately five acres in size and they're right near the intersection of All Saints Road near All Saints Church. That's highlighted.
Just to correct you, it's Terry Heen Road further west, but it's Van Dyke Road right here.
Yes. So both lots are 94 and 54 Van Dyke, as highlighted here in yellow. This is the overall subject property where two existing residences exist. One in the north upper left-hand portion of the site and the second in the lower right-hand portion of the site. And this is an aerial view that outlines the two existing lots, again, the existing homes. Lot one on the left-hand side, 5.3 acres. And that fronts via an existing circle driveway on, on Van Dyke, as well as 54 Van Dyke at 5.4 acres in an L shaped in the lower right-hand corner along the east side of the property with, again, access via an access driveway from Van Dyke Road. This slide, if we could just go back to that quickly, it also, you can see the repairing corridor within the central portion of the property that will not be disturbed, disturbed and will remain and a substantial amount of existing wooded areas. Large part on the lot one, the left-hand lot, a lot that you're seeing on your screen that will entirely remain. There is no disturbance on that side of the property. And then the proposed disturbance on the 54 Van Dyke side are really limited to the adjacent areas of the, the open maintained lawn areas as well, which you'll see further on the plans.
I mean, as you go, as you go through them, if you could just tell us what slide you're on for the record.
Sure. So we're on slide four here for, for the record here, labeled neighborhood aerial view. Jim, before we leave this one, uh, so we're in the R2 zone, I guess directly below that is, is, so is, is our four zoning, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, so we're.
And this is Meadowbrook Drive to the south and you can see the existing residences, single family residences that front on Meadowbrook Drive.
And despite the, the really large size of the two lots that we're talking about here, this is essentially acre and a half zoning in, in the R2.
That's correct.
So we, we noted when we started the, the 2019 start date here and that we had an, an earlier, you know, started with a different conforming plan. And we're going to kind of take us through the, the iterations here of what, what the applicant kind of worked with, with everyone on, starting with what, you know, essentially they'd, they'd like to do or, and could do in getting to where, what we're asking for today. So, so Jim, what this plan here, what, tell us what we're looking at.
Yeah, this particular plan is a, a conforming lot layout which consists of five lots and a proposed road with compliant bulk requirements, et cetera. And the, the access roadway that's highlighted in that pink color and it just gives you the, the overall length. And from a reference standpoint of what the access road for this type of a configuration would be required in order to provide the required frontage on all of the lots. So just from a point of reference relative to one and a half acre lots, this, you know, is a point of reference relative to that that length of the of a potential new road. So that was the starting point. And then we took a look at alternatives in in meeting with staff various times early on in the project to see how we could reduce the overall impervious coverage and the length of that road specifically for the subdivision. And you can see here that the cul-de-sac had been shortened significantly for that. And then the lots reconfigured again to maintain the two existing residences and propose three new buildable lots with this reduced plan, which also included a in purple, you can see on the existing house at 54 Van Dyke garage in order to replace the existing garage, which is located just to the north on the adjacent lot as part of this configuration. A garage was proposed and a reconfiguration slightly of the access driveway to the new cul-de-sac.
I believe that was the garage that the chairman mentioned initially. And and Jim, if the applicant, you know, still wanted to pursue this, but was okay without having a garage, would that be possible without that initial variance that was needed?
There was also with this plan, because of the shortening of the road of variance for frontage for the specific lot. And really, at that point in time, in talking with staff, the benefits of shortening the road far outweighed the minimal frontage for that existing lot. So this is where, you know, this iteration originally had started with those two points of relief.
Got it. So it's the essentially the going back to slot, to the prior slide of the conforming plan, but then the, as we've worked out with staff, the better received, but with a minor variance condition for those elements.
Correct. And then this this plan, let's go back one. This was was in July and as a result of some of the issues with the neighborhood character ordinance and having a side load garage, this was a version which was modified to eliminate that that relief and to address that with the reconfiguration of the existing house, access driveway and proposed garage. Again, you can see at the rear from a stormwater management standpoint, a stormwater BMP detention basin was proposed at the rear, which is highlighted in green to the south or the lower portion of your screen on slide seven. And then this next slide in March of 2020 incorporated quite a few different modifications and changes. The one with respect to the road and in talking with the engineering department and staff, there was a recommendation to reduce the the overall size of the cul-de-sac. And you can see here the orange dashed line where previously the larger cul-de-sac was proposed. Smaller cul-de-sac was incorporated here into this plan, again, in an effort to be sensitive to stormwater runoff, minimize impervious surface and look at ways to to reduce potential effects of the new access road. Additionally, the project included, as requested, in concert with the neighbor as well as the engineering department, overall grading plans showing the conveyance of stormwater in and around the proposed dwellings. And as you can see, we incorporated vegetated swales to a significant extent throughout the lots as highlighted in the darker green and labeled here on slide eight as vegetated swales, which would carry stormwater as opposed to, you know, piping underground, really limiting that that conveyance to, you know, utilizing more green type infrastructure relative to swales. And that was included on the two lots in the upper left-hand portion as well as drainage as it migrates down towards the detention basin at the bottom of the plant.
And Jim, even with this plan, is there a thought in your mind that the those improvements, those drainage improvements, not only accounted for the mitigation of the the new homes being reconstructed, but they have an effect on the existing drainage patterns that we're having there in any kind of positive way?
Yeah, well, just overall from the design of the proposed stormwater management system, we did provide percent reductions in the two-year, 10-year and 100-year storm below that of the existing in accordance with the stormwater management rules. So with the incorporation really of the project and the development of the project, the runoff would be less intense with the implementation and modifications to the site and with the stormwater BMP. So less water would be released from the site after the project than before the project from a flow standpoint and with concern for downstream neighbors. If you could flip back, Ryan, one more time to that. You can see here that just based upon the the overall configuration, you can see in plan view here, the stormwater management basin, it was a considerable size just because of the change in vegetative cover for the proposed lots, the impervious coverage, some allocation for future impervious coverage and the roadway resulted in an overall footprint of that basin that the the neighbor really asked us to take a look at and see how that could be reduced. Number one, also pushed away from the property line. That was a request from one of the prior plans, which we originally had the detention basin a little bit closer to that southerly property line. And they asked if we could push it a little further away and we made that change. Additionally, there was a request to see if we could spread out the stormwater BMPs across multiple lots instead of having one BMP in one location. So that's, it's not shown on this plan, but I believe on the next plan that was another change that we we worked to try to minimize the overall scope and size of the facilities on the development for what was required in order to to meet the requirements and the regulations and respond to the comments that we received. So again, this plan is for three new lots. And then the major change for the next slide is is changing that into two lots. And as you can see here, we we have quite a few changes that were incorporated. One is we have larger lots where previously we had lots more on the order of 1.5 acres, 1.7 acres for the lands remaining. You can see that there's basically one acre and a half lot up at the front, fronting on Van Dyke Road with a driveway access in the vicinity of where the existing driveway is, which would be accessed from Van Dyke Road on an acre and a half lot. And the lands remaining would be a larger lot for the existing home and garage building and driveway. And this overall scheme, we did coordinate with the the neighbor's expert as well as with engineering staff, Mr. Bridger and Purcell. And I believe Deanna Stockton may have even been on one of the calls where we we discussed the option of, well, how can we reduce the impervious coverage, still provide some access for a new lot in the back and a second lot fronting on Van Dyke in order to sort of split this off and minimize the amount of road needed. And this is where we developed the concept of the flag lots to access the existing lands remaining, 54 Van Dyke, as well as the new lot in the back. So you can see here the changes highlighted in the orange color. One where the limit of disturbance before was 3.7 acres. That was reduced to 3.1 acres. We also, like I said previously, eliminated that third new dwelling. So this this larger lot would still maintain that open yard to the north adjacent to the garage and maintain that that garage as well as the existing circle driveway that is in front of 54 Van Dyke. Instead of the larger garage addition, a smaller addition was proposed on the existing dwelling to provide for some interior space and a bathroom as well. On the the new lot along Van Dyke, a rain garden BMP was added along with vegetated swales to pick up drainage from that lot. And then ultimately convey that in a swell configuration down southerly towards the detention area down at the at the bottom of the page. So this also resulted in the reduction of previously proposed storm drains underground and it serves to increase the time of concentration, slow the water down relative to how it traverses through the site. You can see that the vegetated swales on in the lower right-hand corner of slide nine for that residence convey water with the grading plan down into the drainage basin at the bottom of the plant. So the overall access here would be two flag lots with a shared driveway with a common property line down the center of the driveway in this type of configuration with basically traditional cross-access easements where both neighbors could utilize this driveway for access and for utility services as well. So that that area there is highlighted in purple and then it ultimately transitions on each lot to the driveway accesses to each residence. Again, on the left-hand side of of the stream, there's no work proposed over there or any disturbance that residents will remain as is, but this is the this is the configuration and the major change here of, again, larger lots, elimination of the cul-de-sac road and then reduction of one lot. So Ryan, if you could toggle back to the prior plan real quick, you can see back again how that's how that's changed and been simplified. I think one of the other concerns of the residents to the south was also to, as much as we could, to push the new lots or the new residences to the north as far as possible. So we did that to the extent that we could, given the topography. But that was another, you know, comment as instead of new dwellings, disturbance and drainage basins being constructed close to their property line. The preference was to be further away. And we felt like this plan did achieve that.
Thanks, Jim. You know, just a couple of other, well, I'll come back to the slide and ask you some kind of cleanup questions. But, you know, as far as the, I thought this was a helpful visual, but the, you know, to talk a little bit about the forest areas and the, obviously, we will be complying with the ordinance for tree mitigation, but we'll talk about the wooded areas and the existing and proposed conditions.
Yeah, just to give a graphical representation of the amount of wooded areas left to right in the existing condition on the left-hand side, you can see that's the existing tree line for for the wooded areas on the property. And then as you look over to the right, you can see that for the lot in the front, there's a, you know, that triangle, Ryan, if you could highlight that where those trees are removed at the rear of the Van Dyke lot up top, at the end of that arrow, right in that vicinity, you can see when you look at both plans as well as some trees near the detention area at the rear of the site. Although, again, as I mentioned, the previous plans had that facility closer to the property line. And we did relocate that and push that further to the north in the various iterations. So, you know, we felt like there are other scattered trees with maintained lawn within these lots, but looking at the existing tree canopy, we felt that this was a good representation of what it is now and, you know, what it will remain should this get approved.
And of course, the applicant will comply with the municipality's tree ordinance. And there's the suggestion, and as it usually is, to, should this be approved for a condition to come back for a landscape subcommittee on some of these finer details? The case that the applicant is agreeable to those conditions?
Yes.
And so going back to a slide here to talk a little bit more, just to have this up here while I ask some questions about the stormwater. I know you've spoken with the municipality's stormwater expert who put a report together dated April 12th. I want to be time sensitive here, but are there any items in that reporter or issues that the municipality's stormwater consultant had that we were not agreeable to or could not be accommodated in our design?
No, we're agreeable to all of his comments. And I should add, relative to one of the comments for quantity control, there was a comment that that we should ensure that we're meeting the stormwater runoff standards for the percent reductions for the two, the 10 and the 100-year storm, not only from the overall outbound of the project, but also to an adjacent property line, which is a bit of a tighter constraint. So we did review those numbers prior to the meeting and have determined that they can easily be met with the the size of the basin as shown on the plan. And then relative to the other comments, we've we've taken a look at those as well and have no issue with with complying with them. And and our review of them prior to this meeting don't change any of the ultimate conclusions for complying with the municipal stormwater ordinance.
Thanks, Jim. Also, while we've got this slide up, a couple of clarifications I think that were requested in the combined engineering zoning comment letter. The first thing is, I guess, with the driveway, I believe there is a requirement that it be slightly wider and have stabilized sides. That's something we can accommodate similarly with the size of the.
Stabilized, yes.
There was a question about, I think, the, in our plans, we showed a kind of a punch into one of the buffer areas behind one of the existing homes. Maybe you can talk about that a little bit. I know there was a request for some further explanation as to why we were showing that.
This is Bill Potter, I think, and my wife. We're here going crazy trying to figure out why we're blocked. But I've since been elevated to the status of a panelist and that seems to work. And I vote no, no, I'm kidding.
Can you see us there? We can, we can, and we're hearing from the applicant right now. So if you'll just sit tight there and mute yourselves and we'll get to you. Great, thank you.
And Bill, just, you know, I did give you credit for that joke earlier today about the losing a lot. I can't, I can't promise to be as clever.
Okay, and that is the sixth time you've said that, Mr. Kennedy, so we don't want to hear that anymore. Go right ahead, sorry.
I'll be here.
Can I ask you a question about the 10-foot driveway? Is that, so would it be 20? Didn't quite understand it. Would that be 20 feet wide then?
I believe that there's a requirement that the 20-foot wide, I'm not going to call it a right-of-way, but be stabilized to 20 for for fire access. But the driveway itself doesn't need to be 20 feet, but the up the sides of it beyond the paved area would need to be stabilized for fire access. Do I have that right?
Yeah, in the neighborhood character ordinance, I believe it. Yeah, in the neighborhood character ordinance, I believe it it states that at the right of at the curb line, the depression should be 14 feet and at the right of way 10 feet. So we can make that change for the paved portion of the driveway.
Yep, okay, thank you.
And when you say stabilized, is that you know, does that look like turf with perforated?
Yeah, that would be the intent to make it a vegetated stabilized area so that it's at least functional. But again, it's it's more of a vegetated element.
Right, and the board board saw something like that with the 10 acre application some short time ago. So that's a familiar thing to us. I'm glad to see that. Go ahead.
So Ryan, I think you asked about, again, we will ultimately have to get approval from DRCC, which we have, you know, met with them and and had discussions with them about this project. So in a couple areas, the the buffer areas are being encroached upon and they'll be mitigated for elsewhere as shown on the plan. I think a question came up in the vicinity of the label that says eliminated third new dwelling where the end of that arrow is. And that's an open yard, open maintained yard area for the lands remaining, the larger lot that the applicant owns and resides in next to the garage. And he'd really like to to keep that open maintains, you know, lawn area, which is, you know, currently falls within the DRCC buffer. Again, there's no work happening in that area, but you know, we're hopeful that 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 won't be restricted so that the existing maintained areas on the property can continue to be maintained. Obviously, beyond the limit of disturbance, disturbance in the wooded and forested areas, they'll remain wooded and forested, but in the open maintained areas that's, you know, utilized by the family on a residential lot, the preferences to to have those areas be available into the future.
Maybe two, one. One other item, Jim and and Mr. Mueller, I said there was no changes to the slideshow. I did while we were talking here, mark up this slide nine with a with a highlighter and and copied it because Jim and I were talking about something. So this is new slide 11, which is essentially, I guess, had we been in person, I would have brought out a highlighter or a marker and and draw this, but these lines here, there are some question, I think, in in the comment memo about where the dedicated easement area for the town would go. As you know, there are many concurrent kind of regulatory bodies here, DRCC and DEP and whatnot that have essentially the ability to to stop and limit development here outside of the area of disturbance. Those lines that we've highlighted are, I guess, what we would propose to be the easement areas. Anyone want to just kind of walk us through that a little bit?
I think the comments were from, you know, engineering staff as well as from the neighbor as to provide some protection to the the wooded riparian corridor. And and we had proposed the the riparian zone lines in and around that stream as as a reasonable. You know, buffer around that corridor from a conservation ultimate, you know, after this is built conservation restriction standpoint with the fact with the caveat that in in two areas behind the existing residence of 54 behind the garage, for example, that does encroach into the existing maintained lawn area. So if if that can just follow the wood line as it's shown in in yellow here at the rear of the larger lot residence to remain, you know, that would be the preference. But there were some, you know, comments in staff memos relative to what to incorporate in the conservation conservation easement. But this is what we had called out on our plan.
And I believe the other comments, the cross easements, the sewer and and all of the in section six, the summary of recommended conditions approval are all acceptable. Perhaps just one thing that we we had some difficulty with just with with losing a buildable lot here was the the roadway expansion. Jim, I don't know if there's anything you want to say about that, but that was a bit difficult and and you know, we go through a environmentally sensitive area to to increase essentially. We would seek to have relief from that comment if 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 possible, or possibly propose an easement for a future bike path in that area should should the area be expanded. But beyond that, Jim, were there any other conditions there or or comments that you feel we were unable to address from any of the memos that were provided?
No, I don't believe so.
We go back, Ryan, for a second. Are you referring to numbers three and four?
Correct. No, three and four are perfectly acceptable.
Okay, so what was it you thought you would have the problem with?
There was earlier not, I guess it's not a proposed condition, but earlier in the report, there was a discussion about widening the road.
Turbine Road. Or Van Dyke for bike lanes. Yes, okay, that's fine. And and just pardon my density. In terms of the 20 foot wide stabilized area, does that include the cartway and then a stabilized area, vegetated areas on both sides of it? Yes?
That is, that is correct. And I believe, you know, we actually talked to Joe Novak about these flag lot conditions in the last week. And I guess a lot of that goes to its ability to or the fires folks' ability to get vehicles back there and and stage them so that there's a minimum width they need for moving it and then areas on either side for for their stabilization arms. So that is our, you know, conscious of of the time here and a lot of other speaking that, you know, we want to make sure we we get through this evening. You know, in in summary, the applicant is very appreciative of while it was a long process, everyone involved from the township to walk this through and and help come to, we think, a better plan that not everyone, but more people can be happy with. I'll certainly may be able to reserve for some summary in a bit and happy to have our our expert available for any questions that anyone may have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kennedy. We'll take questions now from members of the board, Mr. Cohen.
Yeah, I just wanted to, sorry to keep harping on the zoning, but there's one other concern I have, which is I think that the flag lots, the pole is supposed to flare to a 50 foot width at the right of way, at the public right of way. And I just want to, this doesn't feel like it's conforming to me in that regard. And if we, I can clearly see that this is preferable to the earlier versions of the plan, but we need to be granting whatever relief is required. You know, to to protect the approval if we're if we're giving one.
Certainly appreciate that, Mr. Cohen. I'm happy to yield to to staff and our experts, if those are needed, we certainly agree with you that perhaps this plan is preferable. Those were not yet identified. I'm pulling up that section of the code now.
Jim Purcell had his hand up, your hand up?
If you could raise your hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony about giving me the truth?
I do. I think, Mr. Cohen, I think you're referring to the provision that actually says they have to demonstrate that they can have a 50 foot wide. And they have done that. It doesn't, it doesn't actually, it isn't actually constructed that way or subdivided that way. They have to demonstrate that there's sufficient space for them to have a 50 foot wide pole and not create a non-conforming front lot. And we've we've evaluated that and they do meet that condition. Technically, they're supposed to come in for a concept review to show us that, but we we had plenty of discussions with the applicant throughout this process. Derek, you concur?
Oh, yes, sir.
Good, thanks, thanks for that. Mia Sax?
Um. So I'm just wondering, Jim, or I don't know who wants to comment on this, but I have to say I'm extremely uncomfortable approving a rest an application like this. Knowing what's going to be happening with the emergency stormwater changes very soon and which I think are designed in part because of properties like this and I I I'm not sure why you brought it up, Jim, if you wanted, I don't know if legally we can even take that into consideration. And I think probably we can't. So I'm not sure why it was raised, but I I I am. I so so since you did raise it, though, I'm wondering, you know, maybe you can comment on on in what context we can, we can consider that.
Well, the the first point that should be made is that these are proposed, it is a proposed filing. And NJDEP has indicated they would like to get them filed in June.
Right.
But they're they're, they may never be filed. And then in the other point is that
Well, I am aware, I mean, I am aware of that, and I think there's a very good chance that they will go through. And the reason why they there is a good chance is because of the the very real stormwater issues that we are facing throughout the state. And this is this area right here, which is a, you know, a downhill slope that goes right into a whole row of houses and and on the other side of which is a house that the town had to pay to have destroyed because of the flooding. I I just, in order for me to feel, you know, able, and I'm sorry, I asked you a question, Jim, and now I'm I I've said now, yeah, but I'm just trying to paint a picture of the the context here that, you know, we always have to for modern development, but I would need to hear from our professionals some very strong reassurances and that I haven't yet heard, but I'm very open to hearing them. So Jim, go ahead.
And and Joe Scoopian is here. And so from an existing condition, existing regulations as they stand today, I'll ask Joe because he's done the stormwater review and if I'm not mistaken, they conform to the existing condition, the existing regulations, and that is all they need to do at the moment. Joe?
Yeah, Jim, I'd, yeah.
Who's on vacation, by the way.
Joe, if you could raise your right hand, you swear or affirm that the testimony about to give will be the truth.
I do.
So that's one affirmed.
And before you start, Joe, this is Louise, just if if it would be helpful at some point to illustrate anything that you're saying by having one of the images up on the screen.
Okay.
Like nine or 11 or, you know, those seem to be the ones that might have lent lent themselves to it, then then maybe, you know, call call for it, but but if not, then you know, no need. At some point, I'm going to ask a question about slide 11, but so go right ahead.
You know, the the the, as I, as it was explained to me from planning and the engineering folks is that this application was ruled complete under the previous township of township Princeton Stormwater Control Ordinance. And so that's how technically I reviewed it. However, I haven't got through it in every step, but I believe it essentially conforms to the new Princeton Stormwater Control Ordinance in terms of using green, small scale, small scale, green infrastructure for stormwater quality, groundwater recharge for using green infrastructure for stormwater quantity control. So now as far as the, I I I share the concern about rainfall, having watched it for all my career. However, I don't know of any rainfall data yet that's even been provided. And we all just found out about. I'm going to say this, well, let's just stick to it. I just found out about the emergency rules this at just about the same time everyone else did. And I know that there are specific recommendations regarding water surface elevations and the adjustments that will be needed for delineated streams. And there's, there was also discussion about increased rainfall, which I think is a good idea, but I I wouldn't even know what the numbers are. I've I've heard numbers of 35% increases, but rainfall, rainfall runoff is a is a complicated matter. Rainfall runoff frequency is more complicated. Rainfall runoff frequency duration is more complicated. And so just to say that, well, it's going to be 35% bigger. What's going to be 35? Is it what storm, what degree? So, yeah. I hear there's new numbers coming. What I just, but the application that I can, that I've reviewed under the old ordinance meets those requirements. I think it essentially meets the new ordinance. I have a few comments in my report. Jim and I've already talked about them. Well, the the gyms and I have already talked about them and essentially they're detailed numbers, you know, the project has gone through so many iterations that there's now numbers in one report that don't agree with another number in a computer model or on a plan sheet. So that needs to be straightened out. I agree with Jim about meeting the allowable outflows now with with his new computations. So I, while I I am, I've always been concerned for a while now about rainfall and watching the flooding that we've gotten. But there's no, there are not even any rainfall numbers that I'm aware of that we could even apply. And I'm not sure what what numbers DEP is going to be putting out. So, yeah, I I from a procedural standpoint, it does meet the ordinance. You know, notwithstanding the comments in my report back in April.
Mr. Taylor. You'll need to unmute yourself.
All I have to do is push the bar. I I I concur with Miss Sax's concerns and I appreciate very much confirmation from the professional staff that we have a compliant situation. What I'm still not clear about, if the area is deemed by FEMA a flood hazard zone, and if we've had flooding that is documented and a house that had to be removed, what is it about this property and what has been done to comply that differentiates it from property next door which flooded? It still concerns me that this is a wetland flood zone. And I want to be sure that I'm clear about the implications.
Well, allow me to address the house that was removed because it was down on Brayburn Drive. It was right upstream of the culvert. It was a very, it was, the house was set very low. It was, it was on Harry's Brook Branch two, which is a large drainage area, drains starting with the Princeton Shopping Center going up all the way up Bun Drive and also includes, well, it's just upstream of the Harry's Brook Tributary that runs through this property. So if you if you were being real familiar with the site, the house was constructed very, very low, virtually lower than the road level downstream. And the culvert was the same, was replaced eventually. Princeton made the culvert bigger to help, but that was just more structural improvements than hydraulic. So we're comparing apples and oranges now with where this house was located and need and fortunately was able to be removed because that was the best way to protect it. And this lot here, now I'm going to leave the the flood limits for this site. I'm going to leave that to the applicant and their engineers to discuss.
So actually, that's a good. I I want to interject right now that I it's pretty clear to me based on the fact that we haven't even heard anything at all from the objector yet that we are not going to get to Princeton Butler tonight. Mr. DeGresia, I think it's best to go to the second June meeting and Mr. Mueller, whatever we need to do to take jurisdiction and set that date, I think we should do right now.
Okay. So we'll defer.
If that's acceptable to you, Chris, Christopher.
I just want to thank you for pausing the meeting and, you know, making the decision now. Gives me 30 extra minutes of sleep. Thank you.
So we're going to pause for a moment, the hearing we're now having with respect to Jay.
Yes, and I apologize for the abruptness. I just think, get it out of the
Right, absolutely. Proof of publication and service are in order. Proof of publication and service are in order. The notice is proper. The board has jurisdiction over the University Butler Temporary Facility application. And we're not going to hear anything. And we're just going to carry it to the meeting of July's, June 16. And this will be carried to June 16 and there'll be no further noticing. And that's it.
Sixteen, seven, seven o'clock?
That's correct.
No further notice, okay. Thank you very much.
And this, just for the record, this is the trustees of Princeton University, the Minor Site Plan Butler Interim Dining Facility, Elm Drive, Block 45.01, Lot 101. That is what's being carried to the next meeting.
Thank you, Louise.
Thank you all, we really appreciate it. Have a good night.
Thank. So getting back to this application, Mr. Chmelik?
Yeah, could I just respond to Mr. Taylor's question? Just from a, a real rough impact standpoint of this particular lot relative to the drainage area that feeds this stream behind these lots that we're talking about that comes through the property. I did just a quick take off. The overall drain, contributing drainage area for that water course is about 230 acres or 240 acres. And that relates to the area of disturbance of our property, which is just over three acres. So it's about 1% of the overall contributing drainage area that's coming through this water court. So if you're asking, how big of an impact do we have? We've got 1%. If you considered it a six foot long sub, 72 inches, and that's your total amount of water that's flowing, it would be three quarters of an inch long of the piece of that sub that we're talking about. And moreover, we're decreasing the flows by 50% to 50%, 75%, 80% of the two-year, 10-year and 100-year storms below what the existing flows are on that very small little chunk of the six-foot-long sub sandwich. So I think that that's important to understand of the size of this lot relative to what's feeding the stream. How big is that area? And I don't think it's very significant.
Mr. Chow?
I have to apologize, I have to go pick up my mother from the train station. So I will pick up the recording for this.
Thank you. Mr. Cohen?
I want to reframe the question about flooding slightly differently. Did either of the two existing houses experience any flooding in connection with IDA?
The recent storm? The answer, no. And we're not proposing any encroachments within the floodplain. We're, we're well out of those areas. That was actually one of the, the concerns of, of the applicant relative to the stormwater. We're doing all of this work to meet these flows and reduce the flows. And at least on their lot, they're saying, we never, the stream never floods by us. And then even after that storm, they didn't identify any flooding. So in that particular area, so it really didn't jive for the applicant. But as they reported to me, they didn't observe any flooding on their property near their homes.
Okay. I, I do, I have to interject and say, I, I also very much share the concerns that Ms. Sax and Mr. Taylor expressed. Because what matters more is what, was what happens downstream, just the accumulation. And no, no matter what, how much of a fraction of this six-foot sub we're talking about, it's still, it, there's still an impact. And, but as you point out, if it's slowing down, if these green infrastructure BNP's are slowing down the rate of runoff. And, you know, maybe there are improvements that are in evidence. But the, these, these emergency rule changes, as I understand it, have been talked about for some time. And while folks don't know yet what numbers they're going to, what projected rainfall numbers they're going to use, presumably they will have been generated by Rutgers, you know, climate science people. And I, I'm sort of curious whether any of our experts. I know just enough about the rulemaking process to be dangerous. I, I, I understand that when, in an emergency rule situation, which is very unusual, I think, it, it puts those rules into effect immediately rather than having the year of public comment and da, 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 you know, that usually stretches out the rule implementation process for quite some time. And so with that, if, if that understanding is correct, does it mean that an application that was submitted under existing rules? And, you know, using this as an example, is before the board, but not, but the application hearing has not been complete. Does that mean that the applicant has to meet the newer standard, even though the application was filed before the new standards were put into place? Does anybody know the answer to that? It looks like Mr. Potter thinks he knows the answer. But we're, we're, do any of our, do any of our staff or consultants know Mr. Purcell or Mr. Scoopian?
The proposal is that any project that has been presented that does not require an NJDEP permit that has obtained its local approvals will not have to adhere to the new regulations. If it has not attained its local regulations, those, those new regulations will, will be in effect. And it will have to be modified to, to meet them.
Okay.
That is the proposal. And just to answer your other question, these emergency rules will go into effect for 120 days unless made permanent.
Oh, I see, okay.
If, if I can just add, I, I can't address anything at the municipal level. And again, this is also new to all of us. It's my understanding at the DEP level that a project that will need a flood hazard area permit, which could include stormwater management, it may not. If there's a complete application accepted by the department before the rules are announced, then you do, then you are, then you would fall under the existing rules. That's the cutoff that I have heard, not, not, not an approved application. But if you were, if you have submitted an application that the department has ruled complete prior to the adoption of the emergency rules, you're not subject to them.
Well, that's correct.
The emergency rules change the flood hazard area boundary?
Well, okay, now we're starting to get into speculation, so.
Well, okay.
But just, just, let me just complete my answer or repeat my answer because Joe is correct. If it requires a flood hazard area permit and a complete application has been submitted to DEP, then it does not have, it will not have to comply with the, the emergency rules. If it does not require a DEP permit, does not have to get an NF flood hazard area permit, it does not have to comply if it's received the local approvals. In other words, it's got, there's, there's two different things here. If, if it has to be submitted to DEP, then a full, a complete application says that you don't have to meet, that you won't have to meet the new rules. If it does not have to go to DEP, local approval says it does not have to meet the new rules.
And we don't know whether it's going to have to go to DEP?
No, there's, there's nothing in this that indicates that it has to get a DEP permit.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? From board members, is, is Mr. Muller? I'm wondering if we, procedurally, how, how does this work? We offer the objectors an opportunity to question the applicant's attorney and experts at this point in time?
I, I think so, I think you do that first and then you give the, at least Mr. Potter an opportunity to put on his witnesses. Because what, what those witnesses might testify to might change depending upon any cross combination by, by Mr. Potter. Comment, any, any questions by any other objectors as to how they responded to him.
Okay, so is now the right time to recognize Mr. Mr. Potter?
I think so.
Can I just interject? I'm so sorry, Lisa Levine is here, she is in attendance, and she was going to comment on PEC. So I didn't know if this was a good time to do that or later.
Yeah, yes, it is. And thanks, Carrie, Lisa Levine, why don't you bring her over? Lisa is part of PEC and because Zenon Texarney is unable to be here tonight and generally represents, you know, the PEC concerns. And because PEC did not have an opportunity to review the revised plan, he reached out and asked if we might, you know, give a little extra consideration to PEC and, and specifically to Lisa Levine right now with questions and comments, et cetera. So go right ahead, Lisa.
Lisa, if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
So sworn in or affirmed?
And do you have questions of, of the applicant as well as comments? Because you can do both, of course.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, we did have one question and the rest are comments. But why there is such an increase in the number of trees that are to be removed over the original plan when one of the dwellings has been removed? It sort of didn't make sense to us, like how the grade kind of could be different or whatever.
Yeah, and that's pretty easy to answer. The, the, the original plan was for a subdivision and the limited disturbance basically incorporated the roadway and the stormwater management measures for the lot development activities to happen at a future date. So that original plan did not necessarily account for the tree removal on the lots to be developed. But when we provided grading plans for each of the lots and limits of disturbance and conveyance of the water, we highlighted eventually the number of trees and quantified what would need to be removed. So that's the difference.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I'll go into some of the comments that we had, given the number of trees that are proposed to be removed, just sort of reviewing again and saving as many mature trees as possible should be a priority for the project, as should increasing the number of the replacement trees that will be put on site. The mature trees are important as a part of the green infrastructure, as you all know, absorbing huge amounts of water. In addition, providing habitat for local flora and fauna. And of particular concern on this site is the red-shouldered hawk and wood turtle that back when we reviewed before, a resident in the area had, had given us a heads up on that. And in general, the trees play an important role for cooling the air and carbon sequestration, which is obviously very important. And also.
Levine?
Yes.
I'm so sorry to interrupt, but if these are the, the comments that you want to make sort of on the whole enchilada, I, I think it would be good to hear from the objector, you know, do, go through the whole Q and A with the objector so that if you have comments on, you know, your com, your comments may change a little bit. You know, you'll, you'll have a generous bite at the apple. But I, I think that you're, if you have questions, now's the time to pose them. Comments should probably be, be posed after all of the testimony is, is heard. Is that all right?
Well, we, Louise, I mean, as I understood it, this was actually a report from PEC? Is that, is that correct?
Oh, if it's, if the comments are, are basically the report from the Princeton Environmental Commission, then, then yes, you can go, go, yeah, sorry about that. I'm sure I'm confusing things, but.
So, yeah, make sure. So we did not vote on all the things at the last meeting. It was talking to Zenon, you know, about what issues we want to bring up, like what things he probably would have brought up at the meeting. So it's not an official report. I mean, obviously, we didn't vote on it and submit it. So I'm just, I, I want to make that caveat and make sure legally everybody understands where, where this is coming from. So should I go on just a couple other points that you want to bring? Okay. So, yeah, checking the planting list to remove any pin oak and red, and red maples because they have been hit with bacterial leaf scorch locally. Okay, other things have kind of already been covered, let me go down. Consolidate the two openings onto Van Dyke by creating a shared driveway for the lots, 2.01, 02, and 03. This could reduce the impervent, impervious coverage possibly and also reduce vehicular entry points onto Van Dyke, making it safer for cyclists. And, and also for the new dwellings, don't provide gas lines to them. As all new construction should be all electric.
Okay. Thank, thank you very much. So we'll put you back in the attendees and then if you want to comment again, you know, when all is said and done, you can certainly do that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Potter, you're up.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Oh, wonderful, wonderful. I, I have no idea what was happening before, I was.
Yeah, that's curious, but tonight was a weird, several of us had issues. So you're not the Lone Ranger.
Oh, really? I'm glad to hear about the Lone Ranger. I would invite everyone to read the April 19th announcement by the DEP that it will adopt emergency regulations to deal with the currently existing exceedance of precipitation estimates based upon old data, which is, they're, it's being exceeded now. The, the old data on which the current estimates are based are obsolete. They don't function, they don't work based because of global warming and climate change and so forth. And they, they posited a, something like a two and a half percent to 10% increase as it already occurred in precipitation over the year 2000 levels. And up to 50% increase by 20, 2050. So it is a very significant issue. And so primarily, there's a legal issue as to the applicability of the new standards, the new emergency regulations when they come out to a, an application such as this one, which is going to be somewhere in flux, I assume, by the time that happens. Or even, well, if it's granted, I, I think that would be a legal issue to take upon field. But the Minnesota Land use law was amended in, I think, 2013 to provide for substituting the time of decision rule, substituting the time of submission rule. And that's, that's essentially what I think the applicant is relying upon and Mr. Scoopian and so forth. But there's an exception to that for matters of public health and safety. And stormwater runoff and flooding and non-point pollution and so forth are all matters of public health and safety, going back to Field versus Franklin Township, a case back in the 1980s that has been recognized. And furthermore, if it's a state, that only applies, the, the, this kind of submission rule only applies to preventing ordinances which are used to change or to prejudice a developer applicant. They don't apply to statutes. Anyway, I'm Bill Potter with the Law Firm Potter and Dixon. We've been in the same building since 1987. We did move from the second floor to the third floor. I, we have an expert witness in Mr. John. I, we have an expert witness in Mr. John. Fonnit, although it's expressed for a.
On a. If I'm not mistaken, and, and, and your client, Mr. Potter, I'm sorry to.
My client is the informalist group of. Property owners on Meadowbrook Road. And the leader is Mr. Jeff Orleans, who I think is listening in now.
Okay.
And he would like to make a statement. A fact saying just three to five minutes at most. Uh, and then Mr. John Fonnay. Fonnay Associates has a. Has detailed comments. Uh, on the revised application and showing how he. Uh, worked with. The, the planning board staff. And also worked closely with the applicant to. Improve the original. Uh, application substantially. And we congratulate them for being cooperative. But there's still more that needs to be done, especially to ensure the long-term. Protection in perpetuity. Which is a long time. For the woodlands. Uh, we think there should be conservation easement and so forth. Well, let me, we have submitted three exhibits. Jerry. Said it was enough. They were very, relatively luminous. And so we've got, should we mark those exhibits now?
Yeah, we can. Bill, before we do that. If you could give me the names of the people in your groups who you're actually representing. So one is, is Jeff Orleans?
Jeff Orleans. Don Day and.
Don, Don Day?
Day, D A Y.
Okay.
Maybe Jeff could just answer that question. I mean. That has been my contact person and. Unfortunately, he's a San Francisco Giants. Can't account for that.
But. I'll be glad to do that. Do I need to be sworn before?
Yeah, you do. But, but, but first, let me, let me say this. I mean, the rule is if you're represented by an attorney. You can't speak separately. But it's very easy to get around. The attorney just calls you as a witness and then asks you to, you know, they, so I think that's what we should do as a formality. Are you calling, uh, Mr. Orleans as a witness?
I am indeed.
Okay, if, if Mr. Orleans, if you could raise your right hand, you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or affirmed? Please say your full name and spell your last name.
Jeffrey Orleans, O R L E A N S. My family and I have lived at one oh seven Meadowbrook Drive for thirty-three years.
Okay, and, and just a housekeeping item. Who else is in the group that Bill is representing and you're?
My wife, Tracy. Um, there have been other neighbors who at different times have been formal members of the group, but the client group at present. Is my wife and I at one oh seven. And Dawn Day at ninety-nine Meadowbrook.
Thank you very much.
Jeff, what is your testimony?
Well, first of all, thank you all very much for letting me speak, especially at this. Late piece of the evening and I will try to be very brief in, 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 in my comments. First, this is a substantially better application in our view than, than the one that was submitted. Uh, four years ago. Uh, our experts have worked closely with the applicant's experts and. Uh, they've made substantial progress in our, in our view in, in the changes that they've made. But secondly, this location is a bad. Uh, location, especially one oh nine, one oh seven and ninety-nine in particular. And the whole confluence of streams in this corridor is a bad location, as you know, and, and is probably going to be under more stress. Because of projects that have been approved at, under construction at Thanet, have been approved for the shopping center. A couple of, uh, under construction and in operation up towards Smoore Park, so. Uh, this is, as I think Councilwoman Sachs said a few minutes ago, a bad neighborhood and, and in that sense. Um, and, and it's going to get worse. And so. Our concerns. Uh, the concerns that Mr. Fonnay will discuss. Are to try and refine and, and maximize. The commitments and changes that the applicant has made. So that we can get the, the most effective. Results. Out of the changes which the applicant has agreed to make. There's been big progress, but in our view. There are some other things that can be done, all of which are consistent with what the applicant has already proposed. Um, and which are designed to clarify or strengthen. Those. Changes. We are not proposing. Uh, to do redesign or to do what we would consider to be. A significant alteration that has already occurred. Um, and the applicant deserves credit for making that, but we think. Um, that more can be done, and in particular, among the things that Mr. Fonnay will discuss. Are the changes in, uh, stormwater. Uh, and rainfall data that have been developed and published. For New Jersey, not just in the last few months, but in the last few years. In the time since the proposal was first made four years ago, and, and we believe the empirical. Terrain. Which is available to policymakers and staff in assessing these. Uh, technical issues of rainfall and stormwater runoff and trying to make what are admittedly. A difficult predictions. We believe those data are much better. Um, and we believe that Mr. Fonnay will explain some ways in which. Regardless of the, the rulemaking issue, and I've. Been a rulemaker myself at different times, and I will not venture into that, the legalities of that thicket. But regardless of, of what that. Those results might be or what we might. Believe they should be. We think there are ways to use the data. That would best serve the new data, that would best serve the public interest. Um, in this project going forward, would show a clear precedent going forward for projects. Like this within the municipality. And would guarantee that the decisions that the board makes are the, the, the best decisions. It can make on the best data available to it in promoting the public health and welfare. And that all this is possible without having necessarily to, to decide. The various issues of, of, of project status under different sets of rules. And so. The testimony that, uh, Mr. Fonnay will give. Will focus on three or four ways in which we believe the new commitments, current commitments in the new plan can be strengthened. And on a couple of ways in which the new data could be used to test out some of the conclusions. That are in the revised plan to see if, in fact. Uh, the assumptions. And proposals seem. Consistent with the new data or whether the, the proposals could be refined. To be more effective, given what we think the new data. Uh, will show. Uh, and I may have. Misparaphrased slightly what John will be presenting, but that's. An attempt to kind of frame out for the. The planning board tonight. The approach that we're taking. In order to take this proposal, which has moved substantially in a good direction. And try and come up with the very best answer that we think is available. To the board, especially at this time when we know that there are potential. Uh, changes in the structure and, most importantly, when we think that the empirical terrain. It's very different from what it was when the proposal was first put forth. Fifty months ago. I'm glad to answer any questions from members of the board and I thank you on behalf of. My co-client and also our neighbors along Meadowbrook Drive.
Thank you, Jeff.
Are there questions from board members? For Mr. Orleans? I, I think that rather than invite Mr. Fonnay to start, I think it's time to decide which meeting we will continue this matter to. And put that, put those. That question to bed. And then go to bed ourselves. I assume, Mr. Fonnay, that you'll, that you have, how much about, well, it doesn't matter how much time you'll need. Sorry. Let's talk about when we can continue this to, Ms. Philip, have you given that any thought?
Um, I've been looking at the agenda and we've been filling up very quickly over the last few weeks. In addition, I'm trying to keep in mind of people's vacation schedules and the month of August. Trying to avoid having meetings in August. But right now we're filled up to the end of July. So. There's two meetings. Yes, what?
No. We, we do have two meetings on the calendar in August. I, I certainly am very sympathetic with what you're saying about. You know, public meetings in Au, in, in August, not just for our own schedule, but because the public, so many folks are gone in August.
Correct. So if the applicant would be willing, I could put them on for the first meeting in September. And that would make everybody very happy.
Mr. Kennedy?
Uh, we certainly don't want to be responsible for making anyone unhappy. The first available that's. That is offered is really our, our, our preference, and if the first available is, is in September, then we will, we will be available then.
Okay, if something. Comes up. Meaning.
Well, the notice is in order, so they would have to.
Okay.
They would have to renotice if it was a different meeting date. I can quickly go over now what we are looking at for the next two meetings if you wanted me to.
I, I trust you when you say that they're full up. I don't, I don't think that we need to go through everything that's on the agenda for the next two months. But. So, a, and I know that's, that's a, a distance in the future, but I very much appreciate, Mr. Kennedy, your willingness to. To reconvene on this in September. And.
September eighth.
Okay, September eighth.
As long as everybody here is available on that date.
And can we? Well, and people who are not here, for example, Mr. Chow has missed part of the conversation. If there are board members who. Uh, and, and Mr. Texarni, they could watch the video and still participate.
I, I'm assuming I'm consultants. Uh, Mr. Scoop.
Oh, of course, of course.
Mr. Bridger.
Right.
Just wanted to check with everyone to make sure they were. Mr. Mr. Dobremilsky.
Yeah, I think if it's a regularly scheduled meeting, I, I hope we can assume everybody's available. Yeah. Good. So, and we can assure this applicant that they will be early in the agenda. There, there's nobody else on the September eighth agenda right now?
It's completely clear.
Okay, good. You, you'll be first.
Thank you. And just to confirm, the, the eighth is the, is the second.
That's correct. It's the second Thursday because of the holiday. We didn't schedule it.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah. Good. Well, thank you very much. It, it, this is an interesting application and you obviously have. Taken steps to try to respond to concerns that people have had and that, and that really does matter. So thank you for that. Any other? Thoughts or business from folks? And if not, I will.
What?
Mr. Fonnay?
I just want to, just want, just want to announce, so it's going to be carried. It's, it's just heard, September eighth, there'll be no further noticing.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mueller. That was, I was.
Okay.
John, so Fonnay, I, I see you raised your hand. Did you have anything to add to that or was that?
Uh, yes, I, I just had a question. I can certainly be available then. I've had a fair amount of success. At meeting with applicants and, and board professionals. Outside of hearings. And it tends to move things along. So I'm just volunteering. If it's considered okay or appropriate by this board. I would love to set up a meeting with the applicant's engineer, Jim. And, and the board's professionals to just discuss my report. And, and, and kick it around and I, I, I find that professionals have a way of working things out.
Well, I don't think this board would have any objection to that. It's really up to. Up to the applicant, I think, whether they want to make their. Folks available to you and, and as our own staff and professionals are available. I mean, that, that's, Jim, do you have any thoughts about that, Mr. Purcell?
Uh, as long as it can be done legally, I, I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, what he said.
I think I was advised, though, a couple of weeks ago that I shouldn't be meeting with them ahead of this.
Well, we have met before with the professional staff and we have met before on this project. And I, I believe the reason why it, it is appropriate. And is that. The whole issue of the stormwater. Is not something that's restricted to my client or to the applicant. It, it has to do with. The, this whole tributary to Harry's Brook and in fact, the Harry's Brook itself.
I, I, I'm sorry to interrupt.
It's a bigger issue.
Right up at eleven o'clock. So, Mr. Mueller, do you have an opinion about the legality and appropriateness?
Yeah, I think it's legal. I think it's appropriate. I think it should be encouraged. I want to put Mr. Sun under oath because. Um, you know, he did kind of testify. So if you could raise your right hand.
Yes.
You swear or affirm that the testimony that you have given and will give will be the truth?
I do.
So sworn. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, it's eleven. And, um. Mr. Cohen?
Could it be helped to have a motion to adjourn?
Yes, sir.
I would offer a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Second Councilman Cohen's motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Mr. Quinn, all in favor, please say aye.
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 The opposed or objecting? Too bad. Thank you all. Very much, and we will see you next time.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.